Oh, really? Staff, are we good? IT? We good? Okay. You guys good? Okay. I call the Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025 City of Claremont Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to Order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Tidona?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Present.
Commissioner Niemich?
Present, ma'am.
Commissioner Bain?
Here.
Commissioner Kramer?
Here.
Commissioner Hoysington?
Here.
And David Colby did call out.
Okay, so that we have 6-0 with Commissioner Colby absent this evening. With that, please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will remind everyone to please make sure your microphone is turned on before speaking and to make sure you speak clearly into it so that people present here and those watching online can hear. And as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcasted on the city's YouTube channel, and that can be found @CityOfClaremont on YouTube. Commissioners, you should have received the minutes of the August 5th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Meeting. I understand that there is one item to add or correct. Is that correct, Commissioner May?
Yeah, just a spelling of page one, last paragraph, last sentence. Just the bamboo should be bam-boo, M-B-A-M-B-U-U.
So the spelling of the establishment?
Yeah, just a small spelling, yeah.
With that correction, I'll entertain a motion with that correction in a second?
I'll set a motion for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Niemich, seconded by Commissioner Hoysington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Motion carries 6-0. We will now move into reports, and we'll have our Planning and Development Director give us an update as to the order of the agenda here and just why it was at the end and why we're moving it back up.
It's a simple, excuse me, good evening, council board members. Kurt Hansel, Development Services Director. If you look at the agenda, we, as staff, picked the wrong format. The council format has the report to the end. I'm just pointing out that your agenda does show it at the end of the meeting. That was unintentional. Of course, this board can have the choice of putting it early on or at the end, so do as you will.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So we'll go ahead and stick with our tradition of having reports before new business, and we'll start with Commissioner Kramer.
Thank you, Chairman Bain. At our last meeting on August 5th, we advanced a couple of important projects, the Bloxham Offices rezoning, which will turn in a long neglected site into some productive office space. And then we also worked on the expansion of the Church of South Lake, which strengthened a nice cornerstone of our community. So looking ahead, I want to emphasize my full support for the city council's upcoming consideration of form-based zoning for our downtown. In my opinion, this is the right step for Claremont's future. A form-based approach prioritizes how development looks and functions, ensuring that growth aligns with our community's vision for a walkable mixed-use and vibrant city center. It protects our character, improves predictability, and fosters sustainable economic growth. I strongly believe this is a transformative tool to guide us forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoysington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a report, but I, this morning, I heard on the news that they actually announced our meeting today, this morning, that we were having a planning and zoning. And that just kind of caught me by surprise, like, oh, wow, we made the news. So just to let everybody know that, you know, everyone in the viewing area of the local news now know that we're having planning and zoning. And I did attend the council meeting, and I just want to go on record again that it is my hope and desire that, at one point, our council members will compromise with the time of the meetings to have one at 3:00 and one at 6:30. I think it's a fair compromise, but that's just in Paula's perfect world. But I just wanted to go on record that I'm still hopeful that we can eventually get back to that so that everyone will have the opportunity to attend council.
Thank you. Commissioner Tidona? Welcome back.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. It was an awesome vacation, but I am glad to be back. Still settling in from vacation. My own little milestone for myself, I did pass that Ohio State University Planning and Zoning Basics class, so I'm really proud of that, jumping into some of this stuff to get to be better at it. That class certainly does not make me a subject matter expert by any measure, but there were some really good takeaways, like strong town mindset, walkability, town centers, centralized living opportunities, open spaces, and less sprawl. So it's just something that I'm going to try to incorporate as I'm learning more to be better on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback on Commissioner Kramer's response in regards to the Form-Based Code. And yes, I was at the city council, and I was there in support of the vote that moved forward the firm DPZ Code Design, I want to make sure I got that right, as the new planning firm that's going to be working on the downtown. I guess it's a big section of downtown on a Form-Based Code, so it's very exciting. It's an incredible firm. As I stated at the city council, we have won the lottery with them. They're going to, I believe they're going to be doing some amazing stuff for this city, and I'm excited to look at what's, what we're going to be looking at in the future with their planning. And I think that's all I have to report, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Niemich?
No report, Commissioner.
Thank you. For my report, I just want to remind everyone in the public that the first budget hearing is Thursday, this Thursday, in two days, at 5:30 here in these chambers. This is where the council will take the first public hearing of the budget and propose millage rate for fiscal year 2026. And then there will be a final hearing and final action taken in two weeks from Thursday, also at 5:30 here in this room. And for my other item on the report, it's more of a question for our city attorney and then letting the commissioners and public know. I believe the upcoming city council agenda next week has on it the proposed rules for disclosure, not only for us but for council members as well. That is a resolution, not an ordinance, so it just takes the one meeting for them if they should choose to decide to act on it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And that is my report. Any staff reports or announcements?
I guess, Chairman, I would say that in addition to the resolution that the city council will consider as to whether or not both the city council and the Planning and Zoning Commission will be able to do site visits, expert reports, have communications outside the hearing, as long as they're disclosed. There is another resolution that may be of interest to you that will be on the agenda next week regarding support for substantively amending or repealing SV 180.
Great.
The resolution as drafted is, you know, pretty strong in what it asks for, so that will also be on the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will then, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, we will move into the agenda, and what we will do is handle each item individually. We'll announce them, and city staff will present, followed by any applicant presentation, and then we'll open it up to the public. So we'll start with item number one, Resolution 2025-023R, Plaza Calina Pod I Conditional Use Permit.
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commissioners, Commissioners and guests. Nick Gonzalez, Development Services. The applicant is requesting to amend the Plaza Calina Planned Unit Development Resolution 2015-08 to allow for internal shared drive aisles and reduce landscape buffers for parcel identified as Pod I within the parent parcel. The property is located on the north side of State Road 50 and east of Magnolia Point Boulevard and west of Lake Boulevard. As you can see, this is the Plaza Calina PUD. This is the parent parcel, and highlighted in yellow is the Pod I. This is a farther view of the parent PUD and an updated aerial. This is Pod I. North of it is the multifamily, and this is the development of Dick's Sporting Goods in Golf Galaxy, Floor and Decor, and Costco. The proposed site is a vacant portion within the Plaza Calina Mixed-Use Project that consists of C2 general commercial uses. The Land Development Code requires an amendment to the planned unit development for any uses or site changes not identified in the master development plan or permitted by the Land Development Regulations for the C2 general commercial zoning district. The site is proposing a quick-service restaurant, retail, and other commercial uses under the C2 general commercial uses. The parcel to the west was granted the same conditions, ensuring that the shared driveways provide maximum feasible interconnectivity while reducing the number of driveway cuts along the north frontage road. When evaluating a request for a conditional use permit, the Land Development Code, Section 101-212, requires specific development standards that are required to be met. Staff has reviewed the application as submitted in accordance with the Development Standards criteria and finds the proposed use can meet the general criteria for granting a conditional use permit. The proposed use will not be detrimental to health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding community. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions contained in Resolution Number 2025-023R. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Congratulations on graduating up to your first presentation to the P&amp;Z Commission.
Thank you. Don't be too hard on me.
Is the applicant present? If so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. For the record, Jessica Gawa Cobb, Cool Law Firm, that is at One Daytona Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here on behalf of WMG Development, the retail developer here for this space. First, I want to thank staff. They've been fantastic to work with. This one is also my first presentation to you guys, so we match in that. But this amendment type is not new, so in January of 2024, this same amendment was brought forward for pods F and H in this Kalina's development. Some of you may recall that. At the time, we did not have the detailed layout for this pod, and so we're bringing it through to have that same treatment, as it was noted, just allow for that interconnectivity between the lots and to reduce the number of curb cuts there. While we don't have any confirmed end users for you guys yet, that general mix of uses that was noted by staff is accurate, and we're hoping to find some exciting users here for this site. And with that, we're here for any questions.
Thank you very much. Just please stick around, and we'll open it up to the public and then bring it back to the commission.
Thank you.
This is the time in the agenda where anyone in the public can come forward and speak to this item, item number one, Resolution 2025-023R, Plaza Calina Pod I Conditional Use Permit. If so, please come forward and state your name and address. Again, if there's anyone who'd like to speak on item number one, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the commission, and we will start tonight with Commissioner Kramer, please.
Thank you, Chairman Bain. I've reviewed all of this, and it looks like this is the applicant's asking for flexibility with driveways and landscaping on the pod one, so it looks like to me a technical adjustment to the Plaza Calina master plan. And in my opinion, shared driveways reduce traffic congestion and improve safety by limiting the number of cut-ins onto the main road. So staff's reviewed this request, and they seem to be supportive of it, so at this point in time, I'm leaning very supportive of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoysington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my question was, I don't know if it's to staff or to the applicant, when we look at shared driveway, how does that impact the flow of the traffic going off of 50 into that area? Have we considered, or is it not a problem?
So it's not creating any additional driveways, and so if this was no connectivity, each of these parcels will then have additional driveways, so it just creates less driveways to go on to this frontage road here and then also with West Colonial.
Okay. Why are they reduced in the landscape buffer?
So in between the parcels, to have this driveway, if these weren't shared driveway aisles, they would have a 10-foot buffer of landscape in between. So that's the reduction in the landscape buffers. Is the, you see this dotted line between, these are the three different parcels? With, when adding a shared drive aisle, that's when you're reducing those buffers. So it's essentially taking away those landscape buffers.
Okay. That's almost it, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tidona?
Thank you, Commissioner. I mean, I've got a couple of concerns about this. It looks like, in my opinion, maximum feasibility interconnectivity is going to be synonymous with one lane in and one lane out. When we talk about not being detrimental to health, safety, and welfare, the pictures don't show the apartments that are behind it, and evacuation certainly are something that could impact folks' health and safety. Basically, what you have here is just this big U, one lane in and one lane out, and that just bothers me. There's nothing that connects at 250, which I would assume that would have to comply with DOT rules. And when we talk about shared driveways and interconnectibility, I don't know if any of you saw the line of cars that wrapped around twice White Castle and then went into Costco's parking lot. So how's that for a shared driveway aisle? That would be really interesting. You know, I'm sure you all know the codes 123-43, about an appropriate buffer between uses, minimum width 10 feet, length, buffer shall extend along the entire length of the property boundary. And then here's where, here's the big thing, we come to plantings. So a landscape buffer shall be planted with three trees, canopy trees, per 100 linear feet. So all of that goes away if we approve this. And shrubs, three-feet shrubs, hopefully within a couple of years that grow to six-foot. So again, to me, that's a concern because now, here we are, just not putting back trees, we're not putting back shrubs. And I remember, you know, when the sporting goods was going in, they made this big play about how they couldn't be seen from 50, and they needed extra signage because they were concerned about that. So I don't know if that represents part of this, or maybe they'll be upset that there's a tree in the way. But when you go to page 19 of the diagram, okay, so one of those driveways connects to Dick's, and the other driveway, further down to the right, connects to a nine-building apartment complex, and they're all just sharing one lane and one lane in and one lane out, interconnecting all of this commercial property. And then that one lane in and one lane out dumps onto Lake Boulevard, where, again, the diagram doesn't show it, but it's one lane either going up towards Lake Boulevard or coming down Lake Boulevard onto 50. So with all due respect, if somebody's going to sit here and try to convince me that that is not going to be an absolute traffic nightmare, I just don't believe you. So I have a huge problem with taking away trees and plants. I don't think we do enough to try to save them, so that's kind of where I am, and thank you, Commissioner Hoysington, for bringing up traffic, because anytime you go past there, it's just wall-to-wall traffic in there. You've also got people that are now cutting out of Costco to go over to Toyota and cut through their parking lots to get to the light. So again, anybody who's going to tell me that this is not going to create any more of a burden, I don't believe you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
I saw the attorney coming up. I wasn't sure if you were going to rebuttal or do.
I didn't quite hear a question, but I do have some comments that may help.
Okay, we'll just save that for the, once we get through and go from there.
Perfect. Thank you. I wasn't sure. So piggybacking on Mr. Hoysington and Tidona, I believe you guys were correct in regards to the traffic. I have some concerns on the traffic as well, especially since I don't believe we have an entrance from 50th. It looks like everything is coming from, from the back, correct? Is that where the, all the flow is, is going in and out? So, yeah, with the amount of, I go to Dick's, I go to Golf Galaxy to buy my son, you know, golf equipment, and yeah, it does get crazy at certain times. So my question is, you know, has there been an updated traffic study on this, on this, since there's more added retail and also QSRs being added? So that's my first question, is has there been an updated traffic study? Number two, I get that you guys had received the variance or this condition was approved in the past, but that was a different Planning and Zoning Council, and we are a new Planning and Zoning Council. I don't agree, and I understand what you're trying to do is, you know, you're trying to create these internal landscape buffers or to create these U shape in and out, one way in, one way out. However, if we're, if you're not going to supply us the 10-foot landscape buffers, I do request that we add the trees. There is no trees, and I think especially for the apartments across the way, there should be also crosswalk for them to go across the street to be able to go to these QSRs without having to get in a car. Because I hear from the city council, every time I go to the city council, it's live, work, play, less usage of, you know, a car. So, you know, to remove this traffic, you know, I don't see any crosswalks, I don't see any sidewalks on these properties. I mean, it would be nice, if you guys don't want these 10-foot landscape buffers, why not create an outdoor green space where people can sit and eat? So if this is going to be, say, I don't know, Canes or another, you know, fast food place like Chipotle and Taco Bell and everything else that's going there, it would be nice to have people to be able to maybe park their cars or walk from across the street. You said there's what, nine buildings? There's 500 apartments here. It would be nice that they were able to walk from their apartments, walk across the street at a crosswalk, and be able to go to this QSR or retail and sit down and have a nice sandwich or a hamburger or something outside with trees and shading and seating areas. So for me, if you want, you guys want this landscape or just to be removed because of the drive aisles, give me more trees. Give me some green space, open space, and trust me, the city council will probably, specifically one councilwoman, will probably want open space and green space. So I'm a different council person as the previous, I mean, I'm a different commissioner as the previous commissioners that approved this. So for me, if this, for me to support this, I would like to have some open space, some sidewalks, and that for me is the most important right now, so.
And did you want to address your question to someone specifically?
In regards to...
You asked about traffic?
Yeah, was there ever, was there an updated traffic report, or is that a requirement? Because now that there's more, I guess, foot traffic and car traffic coming to the site.
Good evening, John Cruz, Development Services. This original development went through a traffic study, it was a DRI. They did a traffic study for 1.2 million square feet of commercial. They widened the roads from 27 all the way to the Orange County line as part of this development, and if you look at the total square footage out there, they're nowhere close to the 1.2 million square footage of retail when they did the original traffic study. So to answer your question, no, one was not updated because they're well below the original threshold.
And that 1.2 million square feet also includes the residential?
In addition, they also had 200 apartments included as well. So it's really 1.2 million square feet of retail plus 200 apartments in the original DRI.
And the other question is, if I'm seeing this wrong, is there any sidewalks on any of this? I mean, because I don't see any sidewalks here, and I don't, I don't believe there's any sidewalks on any of the other.
So this is a conceptual that was given to us. It would have to go through the site review process, which was then when we would add, making sure that there is sidewalks and appropriate landscape, landscape buffers of the external parcels.
But my question is, are there sidewalks at the other ones?
Yes, yes. It will be consistent with the other pods that we have been adding sidewalks, making sure that they have sidewalks.
Yeah, it would just be easier to see how the other ones are. We don't have the full package. I don't have that 2015 dash or whether, you know, I don't have the other ones, didn't have time to pull it up on the computer, but it would be nice to see the flow of sidewalk, the flow and how the sidewalk moves, because here I don't see a sidewalk.
Yeah, it's just to this specific parcel, but we'll make, we'll ensure that the sidewalks are added in site review.
And is there crosswalks as well in any of these sections?
Yeah, that can be a condition to put in. With regard to the apartment, correct?
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, you want it, you want it to make it livable, you know, walkable, and, you know, you're putting some great stuff. I mean, it's the Costco and Dick's and, you know, and some people might not want to use their cars, and they might just want to, especially, you know, coming November and December, we got great weather coming, have a nice walk down the sidewalk, go to Costco, get your groceries, go back and walk. So I just wanted to see if there's any, because in regards to what you're saying, wealth, wealth, safety, and health, safety for me is the key there. And so sidewalks and crosswalks, I mean, I would like to see that as part of the site plan process. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Neemek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have just a few questions. Where would the signage be for this location?
So at this time, we're still going through the detailed site plan review. That would include the final renderings. A lot of that's going to be user-specific. And so we have kind of a general program of what the facade of the building will look like that staff is reviewing, but we don't have final signage designed yet because that will depend on the final tenants.
So you don't know if they're going to have like the sign on the building and also a monument sign as well?
So any signage would be kind of consistent with what you see in the other pockets, the other pods within the site? But we don't have a final sign program?
Okay. I, I'm a big fan of the buffering, decreasing your buffering, I'm sorry. I see a lot of greenage on this diagram that's on the screen that everybody's looking at. The greenage on the, on the west side and on the east side, are you planning to build more development there?
So those are separate parcels that could be developed. That's why we're building in the interconnectivity. What is slightly labeled on this plan but does not have the detailed landscape plan that staff will review, is along West Colonial and along the interior frontage road, there is a landscape buffer built in. Those will be planted, I think the front one is 15 feet and matching on the rear. The parking lot islands that you see that are green will have planting in there along with building perimeter landscaping. And the kind of crosshatch area in line with the larger retail space on the left side of the building does have that kind of patio paver activation that was discussed, that if that user wanted outside tables or something like that, it would be built in as well. And, sorry, the front is 20 feet, not 15.
I'm sorry?
The front buff, landscape buffer that's not being modified is 20 feet wide along West Colonial.
Okay, so basically you have the front covered. You're not too sure about the east or the west yet.
Those don't have development plans at this time. We're just building in the interconnectivity aspect.
All right, well, I'm getting a little tired of hearing that I don't have the plans and yet you want a decision from me. I'm not taking that on you on this lane. This is not the first time this comes across my desk and I have to make a decision on something I cannot see. No other questions for now, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Thank you for answering the landscaping question. That was going to be a question I asked. With regard to the internal landscaping to make up or kind of compensate for the reduced buffer, in terms of ability to do that with design and with parking, how would that look from a developer perspective with regard to adding some additional landscaping to compensate for the removal of the landscape buffer from the two other sides of the pod?
I think that we can work with staff through that detailed site plan review to, you know, I think the standards noted the small trees and the shrubs. You'll definitely see those along the building perimeter and then landscape islands. We can work on kind of small tree placement versus the large shade trees and where we cluster those to, one, protect visibility of users that are already there and to fill in some of those spaces that because of the interconnectivity, you don't have that 10 feet there in the middle.
And if, if we didn't do, and this may be a question first, for staff instead, so I, thank you for that. For staff, if we did not have this interconnectivity, how would this, what's on the screen now, look different? How would this be different in terms of access from the frontage road and/or access down off of Colonial 50?
Each parcel would have to have their own entrance.
Yeah. So I, I understand some hesitancy or concern with regard to the landscape buffer on the, on the sides. But I think that from a, from a user perspective, if we can get the developer to understand and realize that by, by the city working with them to, to allow for some interconnectivity and not requiring the landscape buffer in, in inner lot, if you will, internal of the lot, to then allow for the interconnectivity. Because from a user perspective, if I'm a patron and I want to visit more than one of these, the frustration of having to go back out to a road and then back into another spot on here, I'm trying to think of, of an example of like, think about it from the standpoint of where Portillo's and Mission BBQ and, and those restaurants are in that area. If we had four driveway, or three right now, three driveways and three separate parking lots and you, if you decided, oh, I want to go to, to Mission, but Mission's wait is too long and now I want to go to Portillo's, I have to go back out or go back around to get to that place without this interconnectivity. And I think from a user perspective and smart planning within a parcel, this makes sense because it eliminates someone having to go back out onto a frontage road and/or a main arterial, in this case 50, to, to get to another parcel that's literally right next to it, that they wouldn't necessarily be able to walk to because we're going to have a 10-foot landscape buffer on that side of the parcel and then the other side of the parcel. So it's really 20 feet of landscape buffer that they have to walk through to actually even be able to get to the, the next spot. So I, I hear the concern and worry about that. But I think that if the, if the developer is willing to work with the city and staff at the, at the site planning process to add in some additional landscaping where they can to compensate for the flexibility of interconnectivity, I think that that more than makes up for, for not having three separate parcels and people then getting frustrated if they turn into the wrong one and going, way to go, Clermott, now I got to go back out on 50 to go back to next door. So I think that that's something that we definitely want to consider as we deal with this. So with that, any other questions or comments by Commissioners, Commissioner Kramer?
Yes, I want to clarify, I'm going to stand up for a second. So there is a sidewalk along the north side of this road. And there is a crosswalk right there that goes east and west. So Commissioner May brings up a great point. You've got a large community living right across the street on the north side, but if a logical place then would be to add a crosswalk right here where there's already one going east and west, add a north-south crosswalk right here. And that would solve a tremendous amount of problems. I don't have the problem that some of the other Commissioners have, quite frankly, because I see it in a different light. It's reducing driveway cuts, which actually increases efficiency in traffic flow there. I do agree that the landscape along 50, critical. Landscape on the, the north side of it, less, less critical because you're literally buffering between retail establishments and other commercial properties. So I would support this with the amendment, adding and amending it to add a crosswalk north and south at the Kalina Terrace. And I don't know what this road would be called, but Kalina Terrace and that road. Thank you, Chairman May.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Tadona?
Can I copy my fellow Commissioner and get up?
Yeah, actually, you know what? If we're using this, why don't you just go down to the podium so that you can be microphone so that people on, watching online can, can hear you as well? I thought of that after about, you were three quarters of the way.
All right, so pardon the pun, looking down the road ahead. Just confirm a question for me.
Just, you have to point to the item on the table there.
You're telling me that this and this is developable? Okay. So the precedent that we're going to set by having reduced buffers means we're going to have reduced buffers here and we're going to have reduced buffers here. If we're not putting in an exit and entrance to 50 here, that means there's going to be no entrance or exit to 50 here or here, which means we're going to wind up with this being the shared driveway for this and this little piece being the shared driveway for this, unless of course you come back down here and put in another driveway, which means whatever you put in here and put in here is going to wind up on those, to these two pieces of road, back to that U, unless you're going to cut into here or cut into here, which you probably can because that's Lake Boulevard. In terms of privacy, if I'm in one of those nine buildings paying 14, 15, $2,200 a month, I think it's only fair that it says, "Within a single-family or multifamily residential development, a buffer shall be provided along the external roadways," and I realize that's this, but we could certainly make it this, "to reduce noise generated by traffic and create a visual barrier." Because once all this stuff starts backing up, when this is developed according to this variance or what we decide on, this traffic and people beeping their horns and the noxious fumes out of cars, the folks back here that live here that are not on your diagram shouldn't have to put up with that crap.
Mr. Gonzalez, could you show for the, the audience and for Commissioners, when we're talking about the internal shared drive aisles and reduced landscaping buffer, the only place we're talking, can you point out where we're, the only place we're talking about reduced landscape buffer?
Yes, there'll be these two locations right here.
So it has nothing to do with the north, south and external east and west of this parcel?
The perimeter of the parcel will have to be up to code.
I just want to make sure because it sounded like you were indicating that there'd be nothing, that we were reducing items on the outermost north and southeast and west and we're not. It's just internal.
So we don't know that until we actually get that plan of what's being developed on the right side.
And we are, and we are dealing with this CUP with this item in front of us.
Well, like I said, I'm actually just thinking down the road, just a little pad.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. But we have to deal with what's in front of us and, and what is presented to us and not what ifs or maybes. Anybody else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
No, so again, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I understand the whole shared driveways and thank you again, Brian, for, for bringing that up. But for me, if we're going to go ahead and approve this, I would like to see more landscaping on the buffers, on the, on the outsides. And he brought up a good point. Was also for noise, you know, reduction or just, just for beauty. Again, somebody wants to sit down, have a nice hamburger, chicken sandwich or whatever salad, it would just be nice instead of sitting right next to a roadway, they're sitting, sitting next to something that's, has shrubbery and trees. So again, the landscaping is important for me.
Yeah. And it sounds like then, if you're willing to do that, you have some flexibility from the Commissioners with regard to, it doesn't have to be specific to the parking areas. It can also be added to the, the north and south. And kind of what I'm referring to is the east, they're the external east and west, not that internal.
Yes, and I do just want to clarify before kind of the motion phase a few things. We are happy to work with staff on kind of the additional landscaping interview. I would say if a condition is made regarding the crosswalk, I would just say subject to, you know, engineering and detailed review there. Because at the core of this request, and I understand wanting to reallocate that landscaping and that is important, you said safety is the key. And I think when you look at site design and planning, the reason for these shared drive aisles is a safety consideration. And so when you talk about why we don't have access to West Colonial Drive, it is, one, because DOT would not allow us to have driveway cuts under West Colonial Drive because of traffic. They want it all coming into a central access point and distributing along that frontage road. The intention is absolutely that if this parcel comes in and develops, it will utilize this drive aisle. And if this parcel comes in to develop, it will utilize this one. Because if you look at this site, the only other area is on a curve where you have restricted site distance and issues there. If you look at the spacing between this cut and this cut, when you're looking at locations, what you're creating in all of these driveway cuts are conflicts with cars that could be circulating here and waiting in an orderly motion other than having four cuts where everyone's turning left at the same time and interfering with that apartment traffic. And so we, we've noted the concerns here. I think we can work through most of those with staff on reallocating that landscaping, getting some more intense pedestrian connectivity. You do see the sidewalk along West Colonial here, meanders down. The other pods that have been developed within the site do have that sidewalk to the north and this will continue that pattern. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Neemek, you had a...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
A question for staff. How many monument signs are they allowed to have since there's nine stores going here?
One per, one per lot.
One per lot. So they still don't know if it's going on the north side or is it going on the 50 side, correct? Because they're still drawing up the plans?
It would be along 50.
It would be along 50, so it won't be on the facing Dick's or floor decor. Okay. I got to ask this question. I just, I've been meaning to ask it. I'm looking at four dumpsters, if I'm not mistaken? Is that correct? And there's no landscaping going behind those dumpsters?
There will be landscaping around the dumpsters.
So that, that... I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's a part of the code, that we have landscaping around the...
So that greenery, that little from exit to exit, you know, from the right, from the east side to the west side, is going to be a buffer of shrubbery along that whole thing? Can you point?
Talking about each side of the...
No, 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 I'm talking about the lot itself, son. See, Mr. Gonzalez, see, right in, I am not coming down there. Right there, yeah, that... Is there...
Yes, there'll be a buffer right there. Yes, sir.
A buffer of shrubbery. Okay, thank you. Let me answer my question.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I propose that we approve Resolution 2025-023R Plaza Kalina Pod 1 conditional use permit with the provision of a crosswalk being installed going north-south adjacent along, north-south through Kalina, crossing Kalina Terrace. So the provision would be a crosswalk installed going north-south crossing Kalina Terrace.
With, with the engineering approval?
With engineering approval.
Okay, okay. Is there a second for that?
Are we adding the condition of the landscaping?
That, that's up to the person who makes the motion.
Commissioner May, how can I, how can I add this to, to make, make us all happy? What do I need to add? I'll let Commissioner May finish my motion.
What is the percentage now? Do we know what the percentage now of green? We, you guys haven't. There's really not, just a greenery. I mean, it's on this right now. I mean, there hasn't been a landscaping plan or something like that.
So it's based on the, the length of the front, or the length. And that's what the buffer is calculated with, the amount of trees, the canopy trees per linear feet.
So we're asking for the landscape, the landscaping that I'm asking on the buffers is already going to be included in the site plan review? Or is this an additional to, so the buffer going on that outer? And then that, that's already included in this condition?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll leave my, I'll leave my motion stand.
Is there a sec?
I want to make sure I understand, I understand.
Yeah, because right now, there's no, for me, I don't know where all these trees and shrubs are going. So you're, so basically, we're just looking at this, you know, we're looking at the...
So...
I just need to know that this is going to site plan review. She's, you know, they've agreed to add more landscaping on the, on the, on the, you know, outer boundaries or the buffers. But there's nothing here in writing that says that.
So per our code, every 100 linear feet, there has to be three trees. Two of them have to be canopy along the buffer. So they would have to, they would abide by the, our land development code.
So perfect. So basically, they're, they're abiding by Section 123-43D minus...
The internal.
The internal. Okay, so...
And it's just the, the buffer, not all internal? It's just those two buffer strips?
So is there a way, I mean...
Well, we, we have a motion and the person who's making the motion is not, has indicated that they are not wanting to add anything else to that at this time.
Right, so...
So I think if, if you would like that in there, we either need to have it fail for a second and then we would try a different motion, I guess, is, is that?
But thank you for answering the question. So I just wanted to make sure that Section 123-43 still is, is still part of this minus the, the, the internal landscape buffer, so, okay.
Okay. Is there a second for Mr. Kramer's motion? Seeing none, motion dies. So is there another motion for this item?
Okay. I'll have to use the same language that Mr., that Commissioner Kramer had used, but adding in Section 123-43D to abide by the...
You got that, Nikki?
So, do you understand what I'm saying? So I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-023R with the condition of having the crosswalk going, I guess, north... the crosswalk going, I guess, north-south along, what was the name?
Crossing Calina Terrace.
Crossing Calina Terrace, and making sure that has the engineering report approval, right? As well as abiding by Section 123-43D minus the...
They already have to do that, that's what, that's what this ordinance, or resolution is, they already have to do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, so...
But it's a, it's, I mean, it's a, it's a moot point, it really is, it's not, it's not required, because they, anything that they don't have in a resolution or an ordinance, they have to follow unless we exempt it.
Well, you have it on record, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
I have an applicant who wants to ask a question.
Can we clarify for you?
Yes, go ahead.
My reading of your intent, and this is what I want to clarify, is to take the landscaping that would have been within that 10-foot buffer, that we are removing, and put that elsewhere within the site, so not just...
I thought that's what we, you had agreed to already.
We did, but it wasn't in the motion, and so if we just say compliance with the land development code as modified, then we're not replanting those that would have been in that strip, I want to make sure we say replanting the landscaping that would have been in the internal buffer elsewhere on the site.
So, so essentially, we need a motion that incorporates Commissioner Kramer's language with the addition of adding what would have been in the landscape buffers elsewhere on the parcel.
Correct.
So you're saying that the, the landscaping that you were gonna take out of the buffer is now going in a different area?
Correct, we just can't put it in that strip because there's a road there, so we'll put it in other places.
Why didn't we know that?
So I think I can get to a, a point where we can all agree, or at least get a motion here.
All right, so we, are, your, your motion, you're withdrawing your motion, okay.
Let me try again.
I'm withdrawing the motion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Chairman, let me try again. I make a motion for approval of Resolution 2025-023R Plaza Calina Pod Conditional Use Permit with the provision of adding a crosswalk going north-south across Calina Terrace with engineering approval, and that we are compliant with landscaping code as modified. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
And staff understands the intent there behind that, right?
I, I do.
Okay, thank you, as long as legal does, they can advise on how to, how to word it for the council.
I think he did a great job, so...
Yeah, I just want to make sure, okay, okay, there is a motion and a second, any final discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Chair votes aye as well, motion carries six-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, this will go forward to the City Council as a recommendation for approval, and please work with staff on scheduling. We will now move to item number two, Resolution 2025-024R, 1227 Bloxham Avenue Conditional Use Permit. Mr. Cruz.
Good evening, again, John Cruz Development Services, this is Agenda Item Number Two. The applicant, Lake County, is requesting to use the existing building located at 1227 Bloxham Avenue for public safety use as an EMS ambulance station. Lake County desires to establish an EMS ambulance location in Claremont, and has been looking for a suitable location for many years. Outlined on the display in yellow is the property in question. Here's Bloxham Avenue, it's behind the Wind Dixie, here's State Road 50, and here is a more current aerial showing the location, and this is the new Volkswagen dealership that's under construction now. The site provides an optimal location according to Lake County. The property consists of a single-family home that will have to undergo a change-of-use life safety inspection if approved. Lake County plans to use the site as-is and no improvements to the site are planned. And on the display, this is a top-down view of what's existing, Bloxham Avenue, existing concrete driveway, some gravel parking, existing building which is eight, 1,183 square feet, existing carport, and then this is a view from Bloxham looking towards the, the The site will function as it appears with existing gravel parking and no additional landscaping as planned. A condition has been placed within the conditional use permit that any damages resulting from the operation of this use on Bloxham Avenue or the city's right-of-way, as a result of the as-is condition, will be required to be repaired by the applicant owner. The total number of ambulances on-site will be limited to two with a maximum of four on-site personnel. The property is currently zoned R3 Residential Professional. The proposed EMS ambulance station is not listed under Section 125-250 as a conditional use. This is due to the unique nature of the use with the property being occupied 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with the personnel in conjunction with the station. Section 125-250B states, "In case of uncertainty of the classification of any use, uses may be permitted which, after consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission and approval by City Council, are not more obnoxious to the district than uses provided in this section." Staff has reviewed the CUP application in accordance with Section 101-212 of the Land Development Code. The project does not appear to conflict with the comprehensive plan, the future land use is commercial, and the proposed use of municipal facilities is identified in Objective 1.9. The location of the site is in an area that is transitioning from residential to commercial. The site appears to have access to major arterial roadways to serve the community. The service provided by the EMS ambulance station is needed within the city of Claremont, and the proposed use may be desirable in this location. Conditions such as potential off-site improvements, warning lights, adequate parking, and potential Bloxham Avenue improvements have been added to the resolution to ensure safe operations at the site. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2025-024R. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, is the applicant present? Please make sure you state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Wilkinson, I am the property manager for Lake County. I am the applicant, I also have the assistant county manager, Tommy Comfrander, David Kilberry, the public safety director, and Erin Blake, who is the owner of property, the owner property manager overseeing the property. They have worked really well with us trying to find a prime location. This, as, the closest locations currently are Mineola, and also Lake Shore and Groveland. So this location came available, and the property owner was willing to work with the county to go through the approval process, it's already zoned, um, commercial, and we wanted to add the extra element to be able to use it for an ambulance station. They, currently, the plan would be to just have one ambulance, and would have two vehicles parked here, it would be used for them to come use the restroom, take a break, you know, those kind of needs, so we do, would have to go through the life safety inspection, which will probably require us to do some modifications, which would be, I think, fire suppression or something, since we would be using it overnight. So for us to be able to use this location, there will be some funds that we're gonna have to put in to modify it, obviously, this is all contingent upon the City Council and your approval as well. If you have any questions, we have staff here to help, and we appreciate your time, so, thank you.
Thank you. This is a, now we'll move over to the public hearing for this item, if there's anyone here in the audience that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2025-024R, 1227 Bloxham Avenue Conditional Use Permit, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to this item, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Pamela Decambre, I'm at 1211 Bloxham Avenue, I'm right next door, you can see my garage, right to the north of it. Now, that property used to be R2, and it was changed to R3 several years ago, or maybe 10 years ago, and you all guaranteed, the neighborhood, myself, told me that any business that would come there would have to fit in with the residential area, that is the majority there. There's a big difference between the accounting firm that was there, I believe it was an accounting firm, they were there between maybe 9:00 and 5:00 PM, and then they closed. This new business is very different. 24 hours it's gonna be open, seven days a week, up to four ambulances, between two to four ambulances. I want to know why that would even be considered. I just retired. I sleep right there, near the garage, so I'm gonna be hearing staff going back and forth, the ambulances will be coming back and forth and parking over there, so it'll be difficult for me to see, to make my turns onto the busy Bloxham Road. I already have to deal with Wind Dixie, I'm glad they're there, but it, I do get noise from there, so that's gonna be additional noise, and there's, I'm also speaking for the other, my other neighbors, so that I want you to consider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience who would like to speak to this item? Item number two, Resolution 2025-024R, 1227 Bloxham Avenue Conditional Use Permit. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, we will bring it back to the commission, and we will go back to Commissioner Kramer.
Thank you, Chairman Bane. So, this, this one is challenging for me, because Claremont has a need for emergency service, ambulance desperately, and I, I attend enough City Council meetings to know how desperate our need for this is. We hear from the audience that, that there could be as many as four ambulances there, I only saw where it would be two, so, so, so ma'am, I'm gonna correct you, I believe it's two, not four, so would be the maximum number.
It's specified, it's up to two.
So...
Between two and not to two, that's what it's specified.
So, um, this, this appears to me, though, practical and a, and a cost-effective use of, of the building. So they're, you know, operating the site as-is raises concerns about the gravel parking, I understand that, and the aesthetics of the neighborhood compatibility, however, and, and ma'am, I do feel for you, because I, I have been in a situation similar to this in the past, where the rights of many were somewhat trampling on mine, I felt, however, this, this is a, a very necessary enhancement to Claremont, in my belief, so at this point in time, I'm going to be leaning favorably for this, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Huisington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I agree with my fellow commissioner that this is something that is very needed. Having experienced the need for EMS services most recently, to where paramedics get there and they're apologizing on the delay in getting an ambulance to transport my mother to the hospital, because they were all out, having the ambulance arrive and have them apologize that they were 35 minutes away, where the condition was not life-threatening at the time, it could have easily turned into that. So I, I understand the need for a site, I guess my concern is, a maximum of two ambulances there, a maximum of four on-site personnel 24/7, where's that personnel gonna park? If we are to have two ambulances there, when you look at this space, where is the staff going to park? Do we also need to be concerned with, and I don't, I don't know what the rules are, is having some type of notice to where, to let you know that this is an emergency facility, and the blinking lights and all of that, where is that going to go to alert the public that there's a station there? And how is that noise going to impact the neighbors? I understand the need for us to have this, I understand the proximity, this property has come into availability, but is, is this the best use of this property for the neighbors that it's going to impact? We do have the Wind Dixie Plaza there, with trucks coming in, I know we have the limitations of when they can come in and when they come out, but Bloxham is a very busy, very busy street, coming off of 50. How is this going to impact the traffic that's already there for just the folks that live in the Lincoln Park area? Has, has that been considered versus the availability of this property? Not taking away the need, particularly, as I said, someone who went through it and needed an ambulance, in my opinion, I needed it there in five minutes, but because of answering a call somewhere else in the neighborhood and not just having the availability of an ambulance, we had to wait, that seems like forever, so I just have concerns for the folks that are living in the area, how is this going to impact them 24/7? If we were to put two ambulances there and there's four staff, where's everybody gonna park, where's the ambulance gonna go, how is that going to work?
Hello, Council, my name is David Kilberry, I'm the Public Safety Director for Lake County Fire Rescue, great questions. So we had some ambulances in the city, the fire stations, but as you know, your city is massively growing, and those areas in those fire stations were needed for the suppression personnel. So being good stewards of tax dollars and also the need of those patients that have emergency crises that need transport to the hospital, this is a unique and very good location because of the cloverleaf of the 2750 interchange, and then also right in the heart of the commercial district there, sandwiched between the new Volkswagen dealership and the Wind Dixie that's been there. I will assure you, we are great neighbors, and we are very cognizant of the fact that sirens won't be going on when the, the traffic does not dictate, the air horns and the sirens, those will not be a disturbance to our, our neighbor. And I certainly can assure you that throughout the county, we have facilities co-located very similar to this, and we are very good neighbors. The parking would be under the carport, or even in the back of it, there, there is a law firm to the side, and so that facility owns this parcel, and again, we'll be great neighbors. We want to be there for those emergencies that you speak of, and this is using tax dollars to the wisest, most efficient method possible, and the highly skilled paramedics and EMTs that'll be staffing that ambulance to provide that critical care.
Thank you. You're good, okay. Commissioner Tadona.
Good evening, sir. First and foremost, thank you for your service, God bless you and your team, what they do every day. Claremont certainly is growing, and there's a need for this. Sorry to say, it's almost a shame that with all the empty home storefronts and buildings, that a developer hasn't approached you and said, hey, I got a place for you, but, you know, welcome to Claremont. How cool would it be to have a substation in Wellness Way, but, you know, okay. Couple of questions, so, and just bear with me, all right? Two ambulances, four people max. Are the ambulances parked in front of the house?
Yes.
So they'll be ready to deploy facing towards Bloxham in the front of the house?
In the application, we were asked what would be the maximum, our intent is to have one ambulance there.
One ambulance.
We just answered the application, what would the max be, so...
Okay.
We are looking for other locations in the Claremont South Lake area, but just to be complete on the application, there would be no more than two, but our intention is one.
Okay, so let's just go with worst-case scenario, because whatever it is, the need is there, and there's two ambulances on-site, just play with me for a little bit. If you're gonna dispatch the bus, you're probably gonna be facing Bloxham, your EMS folks come out of the door in the truck, and here we go, we're on our way. So more than likely, they are going to be placed between the mailbox and the house, facing out.
Correct.
Fair enough?
Yes.
Okay. The four cars, because there's gonna be two people per bus, that goes on the other gravel side, either under the overhang, you're gonna be jockeying cars, my shift is on, your shift is off, we're gonna be passing each other, and just moving cars around. We're gonna be passing each other and just moving cars around. Fair enough?
Yeah, there'll be two there, other than at shift change would be four cars.
Okay. The gravel itself, has anybody tested the gravel? Has anybody looked at water distribution of the gravel to make sure a bus doesn't sink into the gravel?
No, our intent would be on the concrete surface that you see backed into there. One point to note, this is an ambulance, so it doesn't have the weight of wire, water as a suppression fire truck would.
Right, understood.
This would be equivalent to maybe a cable utility truck or something, a dual axle on the rear.
Okay. And what are we using the driveway for again?
The ambulance.
Okay, so it, so it's not parked in front of the house? Their ambulances are gonna be staged on the driveway?
Correct. The ambulance is too tall to fit under the canopy.
Under the carport, right.
I would imagine knowing the employees, that's where they'll put their two vehicles, is in the shop.
Right, yeah, that would be smart, right? So what's going on the gravel?
I believe there's parking in the rear that the law firm uses for overflow. And that's the reason for the gravel that goes behind that location.
Gotcha, okay.
But it is not our intent to use the rear of the structure for the ambulance. We're gonna be on the concrete.
The young lady had mentioned that there may be improvements to the site?
So because of the life safety code with humans sleeping in the building at night, there'll be requirement for fire sprinklers. Those are the improvements for the Florida Fire Prevention Code that would be required to come into compliance with the Florida Fire Prevention Code. So we, we anticipate a sprinkler system needing to be installed to be code compliant.
Right, okay, so now to ask a dopey question. Is there anything that can go between this house and the neighbor's house that might act as maybe not like a sound barrier, but it's not like she's looking out her window and seeing ambulances coming and going?
Yeah, so I am a fire chief, I, that is not my expertise. I really am not sure what could be added there, so.
Any chance of any type of expansion in this facility? Where we're putting in some sort of a tower to dispatch from or actually make it an operations operation?
No, not at all. This is a place for personnel to come back in, take a shower, decontaminate, rest, have some food. It, it, it's very suitable in its size to meet the need. The office has a light bar and a siren and a stretcher in the back. That's where they truly do their work. They will use this as a de-stress, quiet, watchin' TV, the news or get on the internet.
Perfect. And we, you also mentioned, being the perfect neighbor, that you're probably not gonna run lights and sirens out of here. You'll wait till you're somewhere near the call or wherever it is.
That's correct. In fact, we do that countywide on the priority of the call that comes in through the nine-one-one center. There's two terms that we use in route and that is not lights and siren and then responding. And that is the urgency of the medical situation dictates lights and siren to the scene. But even then, it would, as they approach traffic. If we had a cardiac arrest come in at two in the morning and the crews had no traffic, they still probably would not be using their siren. They'd have their lights activated. But there are times where we just go with the normal flow, not to create more of a dangerous situation for motorists cause they all act differently when there's a light and siren vehicle behind them, so.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner May.
Thank you for the great questions and, and also thank you for your service. So my question goes back to the lights. Cause I know this is not a fire, I guess, building, but it's an EMS. So are you required to have the blinking lights on the outside just so that when there is traffic? Cause there is a lot of traffic on Bloxham, cause I go to Wynn Dixie and trying to get onto Bloxham. Maybe there's, you know, a reason for you all to have that so that it's easier for them to get out? Is that?
Again, being a fire chief, traffic signage is not my expertise, but I am not aware of any requirement. We have several facilities very similar to this throughout the county. And they do not have blinking lights or notification of any EMS station, things like that.
Okay.
And if I, if I could, just to add in there, we, there is an item in the, in the resolution that does state that at the direction of our fire chief, off-site improvements may be warranted to ensure safe ingress and egress, which would include but not limited to warning signs and lights and additional signage. And that those conditions would need to be added, added, could be added at any time to ensure safe operations of the site. So that, that, that language is in the resolution right now.
No, I see that and, but that might be a concern of the neighbor.
Yes, yeah, right, cause we, I think what we're approving right, potentially approving right now doesn't dictate anything. But if our fire chief in six months says, hey, we need some sort of signaled sound, whatever, to allow for safe egress-ingress, then that's gonna be potentially added and that would not come back before us.
This is a question, let me see if I have any other questions for you. You've already answered the maximum number of ambulances. Your intention is one, but you, you had to put the, the maximum number for two. I think the next question for me is for staff, so. Yeah, for city staff. We, we recently looked at a property that was also an R-three residential office. And it was a medical office. And, right, so they were required to have parking. So why is this different? Is it because of the facility that's being put in there and their?
It was actually at the request of the applicant to leave it as-is to use. It would meet their needs.
So does the staff, does the city require the parking requirements, even if they ask for it to be as-is?
Again, it's, it would be whatever you decide in the conditional use permit. So if you wanna require them to pave the parking and require the parking spots, you're more than welcome to add that. But the request was to use the site as-is. Knowing that the operation doesn't have visitors going to it, it's only response. Staff felt that it could be a possibility to support the request as-is. There is conditions in there that says if, in terms of mainly it's for Bloxham Avenue and the right-of-way, we were more concerned about coming on and off to the site. But in terms of actually having dedicated parking spaces, we honored the request using the site as-is.
So go back to the fire chief. Does that mean that there will, you will not have any visitors coming to the site? So it's only for the, just the employees or the EMS?
That is correct. Our EMS facilities are, are, have no purpose for the public to visit those unless somebody arrived with chest pain and knew we were there. But it, it's not for us conducting business. The business is the transport unit itself and it, we come to you.
Okay, that's the reason why I brought that up. Cause I wasn't sure if maybe somebody was having a chest pain and.
A lot of people know we exist, but a lot of times they don't know the fine details.
Right, so, okay.
Great question.
But thank you. Let me see. I know there's no requirements for a buffer, but I do like that there are, you know, the, I mean, based on one-twenty-five, two-fifty-two, there are setback requirements. And just to satisfy the neighbor. Is there a way where we can add a condition to have a buffer, a landscape buffer? Just so that it gives her more privacy, especially having her window? I think she said that she sleeps or she has her master bedroom, I believe, facing. I don't believe there's any conditions in here for a landscape buffer. But it, I would like, if it's possible, if there would be a landscape buffer for her. I think this side, I guess side yard is twenty-five yards is a setback. But I believe based on the buffer that we just did, it would just be nice to have a buffer for her, so I don't know if that could be added in there.
And again, it's, it's under section two, item number three. As requested by the applicant with city council's approval, the site will be used as-is with no requirement for additional landscaping buffers. Again, that was a request coming to us and that was something we felt we could support in terms of trying to get this service at this location. But if you desire to add that?
It's just because of the concern of the neighbor. I mean, we did have someone who literally lives right next door. We don't have anybody that has come that lives behind. But she did come and she did have her concern about the, the EMS. So thought maybe that could be a good requirement added just to satisfy some privacy. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Neemek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I have several questions. Okay, first of all, it does say on page forty-one, there should be two ambulances with no more than four. So technically, the homeowner was, homeowner was right, cause it's in writing. It says right here, I'm, I'm reading it.
No, it says, it says two ambulances, a maximum of two ambulances with four personnel.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was in your zone, sorry. Okay, so that's a no-no. Okay, when it comes to lighting, this is important, all right? To the fire chief, once again, thank you for what you do. Being a retired officer from New York City, I understand. Can you point on the map? Staff, could you give them a map of, like, on that page? I think it's forty-four, there you go. Can you show me exactly by pointing on that map, when you'd be turning your sirens and lights on, especially the lights?
So that would be a decision of the crew based on the conditions that they have.
So if they pull out that driveway, they could turn the lights on and the sirens, you're telling me? It's depending on the conditions?
They could, certainly.
There's no restrictions, I'm not putting the lights on. I, me personally, I think this is a really bad location for this. Okay, that's my opinion and I'm entitled to it. As we're looking at this diagram, which was only shown halfway on, I don't know what page it's on, but if you could, I asked staff to go to this diagram. The one on the top where they're taking all that grass away and then putting gravel? Is that, is that what I'm reading? See that, yeah, that was it, that was it. Where it says thirteen-zero-one square feet of gravel parking. That's all grass right now, so we're gonna replace all that greenery grass with gravel? If I'm not, if I, please tell me I'm wrong.
Well, if you look in the picture, you can see the gravel with the grass coming through it. It's just a matter of maintaining the grass. I don't believe anybody's been in that building in quite some time. But there is gravel there. You can also see it on the side of the building as well.
Yeah, no, I saw, I saw the side, I understand that. I've just, this is right, literally next door to residential. Going to the Lake County manager, if I ask you a question, all right? You said how many other locations you were looking at? One there, Groveland, and where was the third one?
It's locations that the county currently has for EMS is.
Oh, locate, oh, the current locations?
She was just communicating where the ambulances come from currently. So the city of Mineola, there's one in Mont Verde, there's one that's under rehab, but it's relocated. But our station one-oh-nine on Lakeshore, down near Lake Susan in that area. And then the city of Groveland. You currently do not have a, an ambulance in the city. And we are trying to desperately get one here. I think it's a great location because of the clover leaf in the areas that it serves with fast access, as you know. We have a term called time is tissue and the faster we can get to those emergencies, the better.
I understand that and I see your point of view to a certain point, all right? Have you been down this, Mr. Fire Chief, have you been down this road during the daytime?
Actually, yeah, I, I live in Claremont. I used to be the assistant chief here in the city of Claremont. I actually have been inside this location. I can tell you, this is perfect for the feasibility of what we need it for.
Cause every time I go down that area, there's always a line to get to that light. So I'm assuming you would go, be going down Pitt Street or the other street to go to the other light?
In gist, I will tell you every light in Lake County that you go to has got traffic that's.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it's like Commissioner Tadona says, instead of all this development, wish somewhere would just give you land.
To Commissioner Hoyzington's point though is because of that traffic and the distance traveled, it takes time. You know, a lot, in, in the fire service, well, we truly battle this time. It's not flames, it's, it's time that we battle. And the quicker we can be located to those emergencies, the better.
I, I respect that, but how does this help the South Lake part of Claremont?
What was the question?
How does, this is all by the city of Claremont. How does this help all, all these other stations help, let's say, the south part of Claremont? Like Hartwood Marsh, Heritage Hills?
Yes, so.
Kings Ridge?
Yes, so we are still looking for properties. We, like I mentioned, we have an ambulance at every fire station in the city. Today, we don't. We're trying to get back into the city to provide those critical services.
Are we planning to make any modifications to this house, Chief?
Yes, to be in compliant with the Florida State Fire Prevention Code, there's going to be some life safety requirements. There's a sprinkler system that I mentioned, alarms, but other than that, it is move-in ready.
Okay, are we adding any antennas?
No.
So there'll be no staff inside the house? It's gonna be vacant until used by?
No, there'll be, the ambulance crew will be in there unless they're on a call.
Okay, see, I'm, I'm sorry, my New York's coming out of me. Usually our EMS in New York, they didn't stay in one location. They picked out a designated location, if I may continue, so. But let's say, for example, since you came from Claremont, I would say, location, two ambulances, one by racetrack and let's say one in the parking lot by Kentucky Fried Chicken. So it's easy access in and out, instead of staying in that location. Wouldn't that make more sense?
So Lake County doesn't work through a system status that you're talking about? We work twenty-four hours on duty. And so when they're not specifically at a call, there's a location that they can get into air conditioning, get food in their belly and, and rest.
Look, I, I, I'm in agreeance, we need this. I just think this is a bad location. I'm sorry, I'm going against what you believe is right. Let's see, I covered the lighting. The noise is, to me, is, is a big thing, twenty-four-seven, opening and closing doors, all right? These are diesel vehicles, correct?
We have both gasoline and diesel engines in the fleet.
And there is a difference of noise level between gasoline engines and diesel engines, correct?
Sure.
Would you like to live next door to this with a diesel engine?
My neighbor does have a diesel pickup truck, so it, it sounds the same when he fires it up, yeah.
All right. I'm, I'm not feeling this location. No other questions for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I just wanna make sure, I'm going through my list. One of the disadvantages of going last is a lot of the questions get asked prior to. So I think we talked about the clarification, maximum two ambulances for staff. Talked about currently not a need for stabilization of, of parking. Ambulances will not fit under the carport. So I guess, I think those are taken care of, so let me start back over here. What outreach has been done to the neighborhood as you planned and developed this site?
So this is the first step, just to see if the commission is, you know, willing to allow us there.
Okay, so there hasn't been any kind of notice or, or anything that Lake County has sent out to the neighbors? Similar to like what a developer might do for, within a radius or?
No, sir.
Okay, okay.
The city may have, but I'm not aware of that.
Okay. And is, can staff, Mr. Cruz, can you just clarify, did anything go out from city hall regarding it?
In terms of, we posted the site, which is probably on the staff report, it shows you the yellow posting. Our usual postcard notifications were sent out and then also legal ad. But other than that, we didn't go above and beyond that because it's, you know, we're working.
Yeah, but you guys did your city code of the hundred-and-fifty.
That is correct.
Radius, okay. And you guys go out to two-hundred, I think, is what it is, yeah. I, I did have some same, same questions as, or concerns regarding the safe ingress and egress that Commissioner May was bringing up, specific to how we delineate our fire stations even in this city. Because we, we have a difference in how we do that even within our own fire stations. So if you look at like State Road fifty and you look at Hartwood Marsh, there are flashing lights and, and signs and kind of some sidewalk, or not sidewalk, a street marking, do not block this area. And then we have over on Legends Way, we, we really have nothing except for the picture. And then we have over on Legends Way, we, we really have nothing except for the picture of the fire truck sign. But if you're someone who's driving, and we all know this happens, with your AirPods in and looking forward, you may not see that truck coming out until they're in front of you versus nothing's flashing in front of you or directing your attention in front of you. And I think that anyone who's driven in this location at any peak time specifically knows that the traffic from the other businesses in this area, cut-throughs from other areas, come out on Bloxham to, to go east or west on Fifty. And the, the, I guess, what would be the right-hand lane to go through Fifty or to turn right and, and go west on Fifty is pretty backed up at times. And then you've got the left-turn lane that if you have people who can't make it in there, now they're blocking kind of both lanes as that kind of diagonal to jut over to turn. And then you got the people coming out of Wind Dixie and that little side lot of Wind Dixie who either have to swing it wide to go south on the Bloxham or reverse, swing it wide to go north on Bloxham. And I think that, that this creates like a pain point in this general vicinity and area relative to potential traffic. And I know that that can be the case on all of our roads. But given that we have a precedent in Claremont where we have said, hey, we're going to put some additional flashing lights and signage and, and verbiage and markings to indicate this is an area that a truck or an emergency vehicle may be coming in and out of frequently because of traffic, that this would warrant it here. And I think it, it concerns me that we're not proposing that upfront and giving it... I'm not concerned that we're giving our fire chief the ability to decide that. What concerns me potentially is that that could be decided later down the road and not have a public forum or hearing like this where folks in the neighborhood could say, wait a second, now I've got this flashing lights that I have to deal with in addition to the ambulances. So that does concern me a little bit with that. With the, with the ambulances, I understand that, did you say, or if not, can you clarify, are there other locations in Lake County where ambulances are housed outside and not in a garage or a covered area?
Right, so Eustis, for instance, is outside. Typically, all ambulances that are enclosed are cohabitation at a municipal fire station. Or a county fire station.
Okay. And in, in Eustis, I, I know that oftentimes, these vehicles have to be plugged in to, when they're parked, when they're not being used, so that things run and it's not a cold start, if you will. Is that something that would happen in this location with these ambulances as well? And what kinds of things would we see running to the ambulances to keep those powered, if you will? I'm not sure. There's, there's probably a term, but that's the term I'm using.
We call it a shoreline, and it just keeps all of the computers for the navigation. So when the nine-one-one call comes in, there's several ways, over radio, through the computer, and on a phone app that the crews are notified. There are some pharmaceuticals that are carried in the ambulance that are temperature-regulated, and so it's just a shore power. When the ignition's turned to the start position, it spits that electrical cord out automatically.
Okay. So is the vehicle running and making noise at that time, or is it just charging, if you will?
It's just on a shoreline for standby, so none of the batteries deplete.
Okay, so the engine would not be running. You wouldn't hear an idling vehicle for that?
Not at all.
Okay. With these vehicles, similar to some squad cars and fire trucks, I'm assuming that there is some audible radio transmissions that you can hear outside of the vehicle, depending upon how loud it is? Would that be something that if a call were to come in, would that, I, when, when the staff are alerted to that, are they alerted to that simply interior to the house? Or would there also be some audible, whether it's even just voice or tones from that, emitting from that ambulance?
Sure, I know the question. So technology is starting to improve how crews are alerted. Through research, we've identified that some of the reactions of fight or flight for those really wrenching tones are starting to go away. So in fact, later this month, we're going to institute a new dispatch system called G2 Phoenix, and it's what's known as a heart-friendly. And so those personnel that have the reactions of the current tones will have a more smoother notification. It's just a beep. It's just beep, beep, beep. But it can buzz the phone. You'll probably hear a portable radio beep, 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 and then it'll be a computerized voice. So making those changes, and that's countywide, including the city of Claremont. So we're really excited about that.
And, but they would, but that tone, whatever tones they are, would, would those still be audible from the ambulance themselves? Or would it be all internal to the house?
I'm not saying you couldn't hear it, but it will not be a projected PA. You'll probably hear the Volkswagen dealership asking for the service manager before you would hear anything at our location.
Okay. And as somebody who lived through the era of alarm clocks that used to make that jarring and now they, you know, with our iPhones, we can make such sweet-sounding tones to wake up to. I think I, I hear what you're saying on, on the Tony, tone sounds that are being used. Do the ambulances make, make beeping noises when they back up?
Probably.
Okay.
It's been a while since I've been on the ambulance, but I, I'm, but we, before they back up, they have a human spotter get out.
Sure, sure.
So, but some of them, I'm sure, are equipped with a beep, but I'm not sure on the ambulance that it would be here.
Okay, because I know that in some of our stations, we now have ability to enter the, the stations from the back and then pull in, rather than having to stop traffic to back in. Legends Way is one where they do have to do that because of the setup. But I think that, that, I'm assuming, because of how this is designed and how there won't be access to come through and fit through the carport, that, that this ambulance would have to back up, so that is something to consider, again, for traffic and for sound.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, that's okay.
We actually did look at that. So that gravelled area would allow a U-turn of the ambulance onto the concrete path?
The gravel area in front of the house or to the south on the side?
Opposite the mailbox, between the, the hedge and the concrete, there is room for an ambulance to get off the roadway for personnel safety and other cars, and then relocate onto the concrete path. So they can leave Bloxham, do a U-turn, and never go back onto Bloxham to get in position.
Okay. And that would, we're talking, just to clarify, closest to the law office?
Correct.
Not between the mailbox and the house?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Let's see here. A question for staff. What parking is allowed at this site now per our code?
Well, right now, it's, could be used as residential, so whatever they, wherever they want to park for residential.
So, so a, a home, a person who lives, so if this was a residential, they could park in the driveway, under the carport?
On the gravel.
On the gravel, in front of the house, on the gravel, on the side?
There's no HOA that I'm aware of, so yeah.
Or the backyard. Okay, that's what I want to clarify, is that essentially, I get the concerns of potentially having longer-term parking or, or ambulance parking in that area, but that is something that someone could do now based off code?
Correct, as a single-family resident.
As a single-family, okay. If it was a business, would that also be the same?
No, actually, this did go through the conditional use permit process several years ago for professional office. It was approved by council. They submitted for site plan approval. As part of the site plan approval, they were going to improve the site with pavers, parking that had to meet our standard, ten-by-twenty, stormwater landscaping. And they never followed through with that conversion, which I can't speak for them, but I know that they went down that road. And we had a site plan on file that was approved by the city for them to move forward, but they never moved forward.
Okay. And within our three residential professional, professional, do we make a distinction between where parking is allowed if it's residential versus professional?
In terms of the, the professional, then it does come into play where it could be located. They have to be, again, they have to meet the parking code, ten-by-twenty's, have to have lane widths. You have to have fire access.
Sure.
Because you're bringing customers into your site. But when it's single-family residential like this, we, we had the, you know, they meet the, the requirements by having the paved apron and driveway. As long as that's in place, it looks like they meet the requirements.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I think that, you know, the reality of this location, I think the, the fire personnel, the fire staff, I think, mentioned that the clover of twenty-seven and Fifty in this proximity of that being, being integral to site selection. I think also, you could probably make the same argument, that being essentially equal distance to both of our hospitals within Claremont also makes a, a, a prime location. I, I share some of the same concerns and worries, though, that just the type of, let's call it professional, non-residential that's allowed in our three. I know that housing and ambulance is, is a little bit different, so we have to, that's why we're here, through the conditional use permit and so forth. But something other than residential, you know, does require some additional scrutiny and, and looking at it to make sure it's congruent with the, with the neighborhood and so forth. And I, because this is, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cruz, this is like the last R-three, and then it goes R-two, I believe, after that? Or there may be one more and then R-two?
I'm, I'm checking the staff analysis chart, but I believe you are correct. Yes, to the north is R-two. And to the east is R-two as well.
Okay. And I think there may have been a confusion at some point. Somebody may have said, said something about this being commercial, and it is, it is residential professional. It's not commercial.
Well, the future land use is commercial.
Correct, but it's currently, they're not asking for a rezone. They're, they're asking for a conditional use permit, so the zoning stays the R-three. You know, I, I want, I think everybody in this community has spoken up against, or spoken out for additional ambulance services in the city. And the fact that we have a city of fifty thousand plus and, and not an ambulance within city proper, within the city limits, is, is very concerning. I do have some concerns about potentially with the type of, of business, if you will, that will be here, that, you know, we could, we could be having ambulances park in these gravel-ish areas, especially that area between the mailbox and the, and the front door. It looks more lawn-like. I, I agree with my fellow commissioner. I thought it was lawn, too, and they were adding gravel to that. You can't really tell it's gravel. You can tell the other side is gravel more so. And I think that, you know, I have some concerns about what that's going to do to that area in terms of how it's going to look after rainy season and that ambulance is, is potentially driving over it and around it. I know that we, as a city, have in here that they have to do some things for us if they mess up the right-of-way. But what if it's not in the right-of-way? It still is a potential eyesore in that area. And I, I hear, I think I hear Lake County saying correctly that the intent is to put one ambulance and, and two staff members. I think if, if, you know, I would be, I would feel better at a compromise of saying, all right, let's, let's see if this location will work, because I think we can all agree, we need ambulance service within the city, but only allowing, at this point right now, the one ambulance and the two staff, to see what this does to this area and to see how this affects things. Because if it's, if it's dramatically negatively affecting the area, then we have some mechanisms in place here through this resolution that we can deal with that. And if, if, if it's coming back for a second ambulance or beyond that, and we can have data to support whether or not that that's something that should be done in this area. I just, I want to try to do as much as we can to provide for the service to the community, but also realize that this, this is the transition lot. And man, we really raked over the coals, another applicant here for an, an audiology doctor that was going to be open a couple days a week during the day. And, and this is going to be something that's twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and, and certainly is going to change the dynamic of that direct area, and not to mention the traffic concerns. So I guess that's kind of where I stand right now. I want to support it. I just have some, some reservations and concerns with regard to, to congruency with the neighborhood and, and sounds and, and traffic. Any other commissioners' thoughts, or?
Yes.
Yep, Commissioner Neimik?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Kramer, yeah, please.
Chief, I know you keep saying, well, you know, you'll hear the PA system through the Volkswagen place. I'm in total agreeance with you on that one. But the Volkswagen place has working hours. Okay? We're talking about coming back from a run, two, three in the morning. Okay? You're talking about cars parking in the back, so you would have to utilize the gravel to make a U-turn. A vehicle on gravel makes noise as well. I'm looking at the convenience of being inconvenient if I live in that neighborhood for a very long time. That's the only reason why I'm saying I, we need it, we need a location, but I, I really, I don't think this is the best location for it. I'm sorry. It's, uh, the noise level, the light level, who knows? Maybe a few months from now, we'll have to put lights over there, and there'll be even more. It's, it's, I'm, I'm really surprised nobody's stepping up to give you a location, and I'm very disheartened by that. All right, no other further questions. I just wanted to bring that point up to my fellow commissioners about, this is twenty-four seven. This ain't during nine to five hours.
Thank you. Commissioner Kramer?
Chief, I've, I've got a couple of questions. So what is your average response time now with an EMS? So the way the county works is we have a countywide EMS, MSTU, and we share those dollars with the municipalities. So our true service is paramedics on non-transport fire trucks countywide. That is where the majority of the first-arriving paramedics get to the scenes. So the ambulance arriving isn't designed in the first unit on the scene. Now, certainly, it happens, but it's, the, the life safety network is the first responders on the non-transport fire trucks. And so we share those EMS funds to do that. But I will tell you, it's difficult right now to get new, young people to enter the field as first responders. And so we've done something that no one else in the state has done, and we pulled sixteen EMTs off the streets and put them through a six-month paramedic program. And so we've been getting a lot of calls about how you do that. So we are training our own. We are absolutely steadfast to provide the best service in the state. And our average response time right now in the ninetieth percentile is in the neighborhood of fifteen to eighteen minutes. And so ninety percent of the time...
I'm sorry, you said fifteen to eighteen minutes? I just want to be clear on that.
Yes, countywide.
Countywide.
U-Matilla to the four corners or Astor and all in between.
So where is the next closest station to this? If, if, if I'm, if I'm the next-door neighbor right there, and she needs an ambulance, where's the closest station now?
Depending on where you're at in the city, I would say Division Street at Mineola. So there's a, where the Octagon Skate Shop is there on, on Twenty-seven. It's back toward Lake Minnehaha from there, or Mineola, rather.
Okay.
Now, if you were on the west end, it would be the city of Groveland. If you were down toward the Hartwood Marsh area, it would be Station 109.
Okay. So your intent is really to put someone in the commu, or put a station in the community to help? I, I, as my fellow commissioner said, if you've ever needed an ambulance and you're sitting there waiting on it, this becomes a real big deal. So I know that the, the city right now struggles with response time because, you know, we're working hard as, as our, our city council is trying to change this so that we could have, you know, emergency services within the city. Because fifteen, for me, fifteen minutes is, fifteen to eighteen minutes is an extremely long time when, when, when minutes, as you said, it's not about the response, it's about the time. So I have far less concern about the integrity of this neighborhood than some of my fellow commissioners because of the response time. The, the, for me, this is one, a situation where the, the good of the many outweigh the good of the few. And, and, and I, I'm highly supportive of this.
Well, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
And just like you sitting there, I am a public servant as well. And what's the best thing for the community that we serve? And so I respect everything you do for the zoning and planning, and that's one of the reasons that Claremont is such a beautiful location of the hard work and dedication that you do. I look at it from a life safety standpoint, and it's something that is needed.
Thank you. Any other, yeah, Commissioner Hoysington?
Where I understand the need to have additional locations, and you said that you're good neighbors. A good neighbor would have reached out to the community and had a face-to-face conversation with them, because this is going to change the trajectory of this community. And at no time, unless I'm mistaken, was there any attempt to meet with the neighbors, to explain it to them? explain it to them, so that they feel comfortable how their lives are going to change as far as their quality of life, living there next to the possibility of ambulances coming and going 24/7. There was no attempt to do that. And I don't understand the importance of this, how there was not an extra step to talk with the neighbors, to get the buy-in, or at least let them be a part of the process so that they understand the need and why this is happening. I would not want to live next door, as bad as the situation that I went through with my mother, I would not want to live next door to a house that had turned into an EMS station, to where every day when I walked out, I saw ambulances parked on the front lawn. You said that there's new technology that's eventually going to happen to where the noise isn't coming when it's time for them to take off, but that hasn't happened. So, we were to approve this tonight, and you were to take ownership in the next three weeks, that system would not be in place. Also, the fact that knowing that we need it, it's just going to change the community. Not, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner, the need of the greater versus the few, but do you want to be one of the few? I mean, really, the greater need versus the few, would you want to be one of the few that's now having to live with this every day? I think you could find another location to put this, that's just my belief. I cannot support turning this neighborhood into what this would be.
Thank you. I realize, I'm sorry, I have one more question on here for Lake County staff. How will, if Claremont proceeds with their own ambulance service, how does this facility and this site play into that and is affected by that?
So, I don't know how that'll play out. Because it's a countywide EMS, MSTU, that's for the elected officials to determine, but there's a need for transport ambulances in this city.
Okay, and then, if this is, if approved, and then this goes to council and is approved by council as well, what, rough estimate even, if you've thought about it, when you would start operating out of this facility?
Depending on how the walkthrough goes with the fire marshal here in Claremont, I would say somewhere mid-October, possibly.
Okay, so before the end of the year, for sure?
As soon as possible.
Okay, alright.
We've been looking for years for a location to get into.
Okay.
Because we were in the fire stations.
Yes, yes, thank you, I appreciate that. Any other questions? Oh yeah, Mr. Tadona's.
Chief?
Sure.
I come from Staten Island, crowded little place, very crowded. Firehouses next to apartment buildings and residential areas, EMT is always out there. I ran a CERT team on Staten Island for 12 years, so parting with FD, PD, EMS. On Staten Island, just based on our risk assessments, there was a lot of community outreach, and you'd go past an EMS station, a fire station, police station, and usually there'd be somebody, you know, out there, more than one, with a smile on their face, greeting, you know, it's a lot of handshaking, it's a lot of meet and greet. So, I can only imagine that maybe, maybe, one benefit to the community would be, you know, it's hey, good morning, how are you, how you doing, getting to know the folks, you know, the kids come over, hey, can I sit in the bus, hey, can I, you know, so there's some of that. It's not like four people are going to be hermited in that building. So, on the flip side of everything, there's always that relationship or that handshake with your community, am I right?
That is correct.
So, again, it's not like four people to hold up in there, and God forbid, if somebody does know that you're there, I'm assuming they can approach the house and say, hey, you know, this lady just fell, or this guy is like, you know, there's been an accident, I don't know if he got the call yet, I mean, it's not like you're not answering the door.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
If the crew's there, they will-
They can assist.
Certainly answer the door and be great neighbors.
Okay.
You know, we're always being thanked.
So, the last thing is, on Staten Island, one of our biggest events was National Night Out, where we would go down to the boardwalk and, again, just hanging out with, you know, the heroes of Staten Island. So, if there isn't a call, if for some reason you're not racing all over Claremont, I mean, is it possible to do some outreach from here? So, this way the neighbors can come up and say, hey, you know, my name is this, my name is that.
Yeah, we do that currently. We have open houses for our locations, but one of the things out of professional respect for the city is, we don't, you know, because we are Lake County Fire Rescue, is, we want to, you know, I understand what Chief Azell has here, I was a member of the city of Claremont, and we respect that. We work with businesses of showing ambulances, and we have just down the street our paramedic graduation, that we participate in that, showing ambulances and things like that, but we do have a heavy volume of call load, and so we don't have as many opportunities for the public displays, but we are certainly doing that as we stand up additionally.
Right, because this could actually be almost like a recruiting site, I come in with my kid or whatever, he wants just some more information on what it is to be one of you.
Yeah, we call it a career in a year.
Okay.
You can be a first responder in one year's training.
Awesome.
Have a career.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Ray?
It's just one simple question to the property manager, property manager. You're the property manager.
Kinda.
Yeah, okay.
I represent the property owner.
Oh, okay.
My name's Aaron Blake, I'm at 290 Citrus Tower Boulevard, I grew up in Claremont since I was probably six years old. I'm a commercial real estate broker-
Perfect.
... and deal with a lot of things, and, you know, I was listening to the neighbor and to you making your comments about why didn't we reach out. Honestly, when you stand on that property and you look, it's not in any of these pictures, but when you stand on that driveway and look to the west, you're staring at the back of Windexy with dumpsters and semi-trucks and all of that type of look. And because of our knowledge of how the operation would be run and with the chief's experience, we really thought that it was a quieter and more conducive use, but I heard the neighbor loud and clear, and I've got a suggestion for that. Perhaps you put in a motion that from the front corner of the building, which would be the northwest corner, we put a hedge row all the way out, similar to what is currently on the south side between the law firm and the building.
So, you're saying in between the neighbor-
Correct, so from the northwest corner of the house, straight west, mimicking the existing bush row, you know, six feet tall, three, four feet wide, that would block that out effectively completely and provide her the privacy, but yet still serve the community and have the fast response time, and if anybody in that neighborhood ever needed it, they sure would be glad they had it, I know that. But, our thought was, we really felt the way that we know this operates is pretty quiet compared to the businesses that were around there, and so we were not attempting to be a bad neighbor, we thought we were a very good neighbor, and, you know, just a matter of not knowing what you don't know, and I heard her loud and clear, and I think that's a very reasonable thing to do, to get along with the neighbors. So, that's my only comment.
And I know you represent the owner who has the office next door. Is there a lease that the Lake County is signing with you all?
Yeah, that's the way it works.
And that's contingent, and it's contingent on, of course, the approval of this?
Well, to give you a little background, you know, we could have rented that to, you know, a family of three or four or whatever, and been done with it and had money. We'd been working on this for six whole months, so the owner of the property's given up rental income for six months to try to get the ambulance service that Claremont needs. That's a pretty big sacrifice that most of my clients would not do. So, it's not really, I mean, it's a rental, but they, it's more about the fact that they know it's needed, and so they made that decision early on. They knew this was a long process and you got to go through all these steps, and they made that decision upfront. And I think we started in end of January, beginning of February, and now we are in September, so, and it'll be at least another 30 to 60 days before that comes online, maybe longer based on how long it takes to get the fire suppression and whatnot put into the building. So, call it a year, by the time it's all said and done. The owner gave up rental income for a whole year to try to do this for the community.
So, I'm also in commercial real estate, so that's why I'm asking about the sign, if there was a lease signed, and so the owner is not doing any tenant improvements, just to kind of make it nicer?
No, they're going to be based upon what the city requires.
But nothing on the outside, just, you know?
No, because we didn't want to disturb the neighborhood or change the look or paint it bright green or anything. We wanted it to be just there and not noticed, was the intention anyway.
Right, so the gravel, will there be new gravel put in?
No, it's, we let the grass grow over it. If you went back and looked at photos from two years ago, that whole thing was just a gravel yard, the entire thing, and so we chose, rather than spraying it with Roundup and making it look bad, we just let it start growing in there to fill in, so at least it looked a little better. But, that was all done by the previous owner of the property who sold it to the building owner next door.
Then, the, my last question, and I appreciate you coming up, saying about the landscape buffer, because that was one of the ones, I think I brought it up, and I really would like to have that, I think it would be a nice gesture, especially for the-
Out there thinking that's a great idea, why not?
For the neighbor, yeah, and the access to the back, since there is like, will they be able to use your driveway in the back if there is?
They have their own asphalt drive that goes on the other side of that bushes, and that's what they're going to do in the future, and then there's a fence behind the property, and there's another business behind it, so there's nothing, that's all blocked off.
So, there's a business behind this one that's not residential?
Catty corner there's a business, and I believe directly behind it is R2 or R3, but we have no intention of going that direction at all.
Okay, so they're not parking their car, so I, you know, landscaping is great, thank you very much for offering that, and I think that should be definitely a condition that we got, but I was just wondering, it looks like there's a buffer, there's landscaping in the back that doesn't bother the-
It's like a giant bogan belia tree back there along the power line easement, pretty much filling in and making a wall at this point.
Perfect, that's, you answered all my questions, I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, it sounds like we have the person representing the property owner, is that, am I safe to say that?
Yes.
Okay, so it sounds like we have the property owner representative indicating that they would agree to providing a hedge line on the north side of the property, on the line there that would mimic what's on the south side between the house and the law office, so it would also be between the two residents, or two houses?
Correct, but I would start it right on the corner, because if you put it down the whole property line, they might not like that, but it would block the entire view.
Corner of the house, back, not all the way to the front?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, so corner of the house, the starting point of the house, back.
Correct.
Okay.
Because there's a lot more distance between the law firm and that carport than there is between the house and the neighbor house.
Okay, thank you.
So, I wouldn't want to infringe on that.
Thank you. And then, I guess if, so the commission really has before us any motions relative to that, adding that hedge line, potentially whether or not we want to limit the ambulances to one versus two, or two staff versus four staff, based off of what Lake County is indicating, and then any, address any concerns with the parking, if anyone wants to do that. So, I would bring it back to the commission for any motions.
I'll make a motion.
Sure.
Item number two, Resolution 2025-024R, 1227 Bloxham Avenue, conditional use permit with the addition of a hedge row commencing at the front of the home, ending at the rear property line.
Mimicking what's on the south side?
Mimicking what's on the south side.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with an addition of adding a hedge line mimicking the south side, but it would be on the north side from the start of the home to the back.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah, well, can we have a, first, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
So, we have a second, now any final discussion, Mr. Neemek, Commissioner Neemek?
Yeah, when you say mimicking, I'm sorry, when you say mimicking, that hedge line goes all the way to the street. The gentleman that just came up says he's going to the corner of the house.
Yes, so Mr. Kramer's motion is from the corner of the house, but I'm referring to mimicking as in height and width.
Height-wise, okay. And I just want clarification on that.
Yeah, coming forward towards Bloxham, not backwards, so from the house forward to Bloxham.
Okay, so I had asked earlier if we said to the back of the house, and I thought you agreed to that, so-
From the northwest corner of the house, which is the one we're looking at in the picture there on the left side, that front northwest corner, straight west out towards Bloxham, so that it blocks anything from the driveway from bothering her windows or where she stays.
So, that's different than what you're proposing.
Could you put a map up there and show us exactly what you're, trace it out for us?
Here, I'll just draw it on there first.
Thanks, John.
Kind of like this, this is not exact, but you get the idea, like that.
So, towards the front.
When you're over here in her house, your line of sight is blocked, so that nothing sitting in the driveway can be seen.
So, from the front of the building to Bloxham.
Correct, you don't, she doesn't want to see from these windows anything going on over here, so we want to create privacy from here forward.
Okay, so let me rephrase this. I'll make the motion again if that's acceptable, Chairman?
Yeah, as long as you're second, it's okay with it.
Okay, are you okay, Vince, if I change, if I, I'm sorry, Tadona, thank you. Alright, so, Resolution 2025-024R, 1227 Bloxham Avenue, conditional use permit with the addition of a hedge row commencing at the front of the house, ending at Bloxham Avenue.
Towards the front, okay, as diagrammed.
As diagrammed.
And, Mr. Tadona, you're okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay, any final discussion?
Yes. Let me just go on the record of saying that you guys promised me, when you changed it from R2 to R3, that it would be a business that fits in with residential.
Thank you, thank you.
And I want, it's a state that you went back on your word.
Ma'am, I wasn't-
So, ma'am, so what will happen here is, this is a recommendation to the city council, this is not a final decision, the city council will actually make the final decision on whether or not this gets approved. We will make a recommendation to either approve it or deny it based off of the motion that was put before us, so basically what's in the packet with the addition of this hedge that you see in the blue circles from the front of the house towards Bloxham. And then, the council will actually have a public hearing just like this, and you'll be able to voice your opposition at that point for any final approval or denial by the city council, okay?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, so, we have a move in a second, any final discussion, seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so, hold on a second here, we have, we have three, so we have Mr. Kramer, I know, Mr. Tadona, and Ms. May as ayes, and Mr. Neemek, and Mrs. Hoynsington as nays. Chair votes, I wish this was only two, or one ambulance and not two. I will vote aye as well. Motion carries 4-2. You're welcome. So, this will then go to the city council for an actual approval or denial based off of this recommendation, okay? Alright, we are now to item three, Resolution 2025-026R, Lake Haven on Grand, conditional use permit, and Mr. Gonzalez?
Mr. Chair, I would like to ask, is it, would it be possible for a five-minute break, or do we want to keep going until the last item, or?
We can take a five-minute break. Alright, so it's 8:36, we'll reconvene, what is that, at 8:41.
Thank you.
We will call the, uh, P&amp;Z meeting back to order and we will start now with item number three, resolution 2025 dash 026R, Lake Haven on Grand, conditional use permit. And Mr. Gonzalez?
Good evening, commissioners and guests, Nick Gonzalez, Development Services. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a multifamily complex in the R2 medium density residential zoning district. The vacant parcels are located east of South Grand Highway and north of East Highway 50. And on the location map, the parcel is outlined in yellow. This is Grand Highway and it's north of the At Home Shopping Plaza. The subject property is designed for medium density residential use under the city's future land use and is Zone R2, which permits, uh, multifamily development subject to conditional use permit approval. Zoom this out. The proposed project includes a twenty-unit multifamily development that is consistent with both the density allowances and the intent of the R2 zoning district. The CUP process provides an opportunity to ensure that multifamily developments are compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods and that appropriate design, buffering and access are addressed. Staff has reviewed the proposed request and find it to be in compliance with the city's land development code requirements. No waivers or variances have been requested by the applicant at this time. The site is located adjacent to residential and commercial uses with frontage and access from Sa- South Grand Highway. The proposed development will serve as compatible transition between existing single-family neighborhoods and commercial corridors. The site is located directly behind the At Home Store and down from, and down from an existing stormwater pound. The development could be considered infill development since majority of the surrounding area has been developed. When evaluating a request for a conditional use permit, the Land Development Code, Section 101 dash 212 requires specific development standards that are required to be met. Staff had reviewed the application as submitted in accordance with the development standards criteria and finds a proposed use can meet the general criteria for granting a conditional use permit. The proposed use will not be detrimental to health, safety and welfare of surrounding community. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit, resolution number 2025 dash 26, 26R. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, is the applicant present? And if, would you like to present? If so, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, uh, my name is Joe Zagami Jr. Address is 230 Mohawk Road in Clermont. I think Nick covered it pretty well. I'll just say that, um, we've put a lot of thought into this. I have had a pre-application meeting with the city. All the city departments have had an opportunity to review this and comment, including fire. And what you see is a revised preliminary conceptual site plan with their input having been considered and factored into the design.
Okay, thank you very much. This is now the portion of the meeting, we're a public hearing for item number three, resolution 2025 dash 026R, Lake Haven on Grand, conditional use permit. If you'd like to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record and please limit your comments to this item. Anyone here to speak on item number three? Seeing no one, we will bring it back to the commission and we will start with Commissioner Kramer.
Thank you, Chairman Vane. So this request is consistent with the site zoning and future use land designations and while it's, uh, it seems to be a somewhat modest project, uh, the cut process allows us to intrude. It's designed with, uh, proper access, uh, buffering and compatibility with adjacent properties, so, um... Have we done any traffic impacts that, that, and how's that gonna handle, be handled on South Grand Highway? That's a fairly small street and I, I use that street quite a bit, so, um, have we done any traffic studies on this?
Can you hear me well? Well, the, uh, the applicant did pr- uh, provide a traffic summary, uh, stating that they will generate a fourteen peak hour trips uh, to be considered de minimis. Uh, and then if, uh, if they need to, they would, um, they were requested for exemption for a tier one traffic study.
Okay. And then, um, looking at aerial view of that, you're right next to, uh, a lake there, um, Jack's Lake. How will stormwater be managed given its proximity to that lake?
Uh, that will be going through the, the, uh, site rev- site review process and environmental will look through that for the stormwater.
And how about anything to do with schools and, and capacity, is this gonna impact our s-
It's de minimis.
De minimis, okay.
It's only twenty units.
All right, I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoyzington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I too, this looks like it's compatible, but that is a busy street. I mean, when you look at what's going on, on Grand Highway right now, you have Mason Ridge that is almost finished. That multi, it's gonna be huge. The development that's right to the other side of it, those townhomes, and then this one, it's just the traffic that's going to be on this Grand Highway with twenty additional homes coming in. That concerns me because that is a busy street, that is a street that has school buses in the morning and in the afternoon, um, from the apartment complex to the other housing developments there. Is there one way in and one way out here? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, ma'am.
And we, we don't see a problem with that as far as emergency vehicles being able to get in, waste management being able to get in, turnaround, where the trash bins, all of that's been addressed?
So fire, it, fire did look at this plan, uh, as Mr. Zagami, uh, did state through our pre-application. They did ax, add a, um, they added this turnaround access for EMS and the dumpster enclosure is right here.
Okay, okay.
So it has enough room with the, that's our, our fire truck, um, turn ra- turn ratio. So it does make that turn ratio, um, and then the fire trucks, I mean, the dumpster trucks would be doing the, the same round.
And you said the stormwater issue has been addressed with Jack's Lake?
That will, through site repu- site review process, uh, environmental services will have comments on that and make sure that it's, uh, it's addressed.
My real concern is just the additional traffic that's gonna be on this road. Cause it's just a two-lane major fairway to get from... To fifty, so I have real concerns about the additional traffic. But that's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Tedona?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If this is a conceptual plan, I mean, just some things that come off the top of my head. And believe it or not, when I saw this after, after getting that certificate from Ohio State University, I was like, God sent me a gift. So when we talk about the trash and the dumpster, so again, um, the new guy still, we're walking the trash to the dumpster. We're not talking about any kind of curbside pickup, right? So all these folks are walking to the tra- to the dumpster, okay? There's a lot of trees that are going bye-bye on, on this site. Is anything outside of the yellow box as far as trees staying?
You're saying outside of the yellow box?
Yeah, outside of the yellow box, outside of the yellow box. Are those trees staying?
This area?
Well, come around, there you go, where your pen is now.
So that's not a part of the property so that those trees wouldn't be going anywhere.
Okay, all right, so we're taking down a lot of trees as usual here in Clermont. So... What is that at the top? What is that? So I got the trees-
Can you point at, on your plant so I can see?
So here's, sure, I love it, I could, yeah. Houses here, what is that?
This is the access road?
No, 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 no. That's the access road to come in.
This is a sidewalk, a sidewalk, sir.
So it's a sidewalk, all right, so, are there, a walking trail, thank you so much, which we, so potential of an open space or maybe some sort of relaxation with benches? Are we putting any of the trees that we're taking down there to create one of our little buffers or?
Can you go back to your seat, please, yeah? I, I'm just, I, 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 I'm fine with that, but I mean, we have to realize there are people watching on TV and here that cannot hear when we're not amplified. So, I mean, it, you, we can ask staff or we can go to the podium, but please don't go to the screen behind us.
Thank you, Chair.
Sorry about that. So, look, in a nutshell, I'm concerned about trees. There should be something in between that walking space to Lakefront Village. There's a lot of walking here, so even if I wanted to take a walk on South Grand, it's a long walk to get to South Grand. I just think there should be something in there that is pleasant to the residents. I agree with my Commissioner Hoyzington that you're right off of fifty, so you've got that whole traffic off of fifty. On the other side of Lakefront Village, you've got a tremendous development that's going on there 'cause I actually walked it. Part of my other concern is you've got four parking spots for guests. Maybe the math works out wonderful, but you've got twenty houses, multiple bedrooms. So the first four guests that show up, anybody else that shows up, has got no place to park. The other thing in terms of walkability, okay, and I've not been out to the place, but here's a perfect, perfect opportunity for somebody to talk to the fu- the owners of At Home and that strip mall and maybe get something going so I can actually, since I'm doing all this walking just to get to South Grand or get to the garbage station, I might actually be able to take a walk or get in a cart and go to At Home or the buffet or the, uh, the gym or there's a restaurant there. So, I mean, if, if, if that was taken into consideration into a conceptual plan, I probably have less of a problem with this. I like the idea that you're secluded, you're off the road. I mean, I lived down a dead-end street on Staten Island, it was awesome. But at the same token, I'm, I'm on a dead-end street where I'm doing a lot of walking and I'm going to need that car that's gonna wind up on South Grand. And like I said, I just, I'm of the opinion, if you could make it more walkable, more centralized and tie into that At Home, you might be able to alleviate some traffic because now at least I could go shopping without having to get my car just to go down a quarter mile to enter into a parking spot. So I've just got some serious concerns. Plus, we don't even, I don't, are the par- are the guest parking ADA? That's a long way for somebody to actually get out of a parking spot to go to that corner house, um, if they're in a wheelchair. So, um, just some of my concerns, Mr. Chair, and I'm, I'll stay seated from now on.
Thank you. I, I, I understand the, the need to wanna point out, but it, it, it just helps with, it's not just us. There are other people watching and listening that does help for, uh, for that information flow as well, so, um, Commissioner May?
So is this a for sale or a for rent property?
For sale.
For sale, okay, so there's-
Fee simple.
Fee simple, got it. Now the staff, there are different requirements for single, for, for sale and for rent when it comes to parking? Now, the staff, there are different requirements for single, for, for sale and for rent when it comes to parking? I'm putting on-
It's based on the number of bedrooms.
It's based on the bedrooms.
Yeah, and I believe the calculations there.
Yeah, I see.
One and a half spaces per one bedroom unit and two spaces per two-bedroom unit. And I believe these are one car garages and then one in the driveways.
Right, so that, so what's the total? So, it includes the driveway and the four?
So, that'd be forty spaces and then plus those four guest parking spaces.
Yeah, cause it's not in here, so that's why I wanted to get. So, forty spaces plus the four. And are you required to have eighty, um, the handicap?
The four parking spaces were a, an addition from the applicant, it wasn't staff required.
So, that's just, he's, it's an added bonus?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, you guys talked about traffic study and it ha- it's, it's stated here that I guess the fourteen peak hour trips, which is considered to be de minimis, but I guess it's considered de minimis by whoever the traffic consultant. Um, unfortunately, we didn't have that summary, it would be great to have that summary for the next package.
Okay.
For us, especially, um, this is a two-lane road. But it's already, it's, I, I see it in this little traffic summary here. I'm a tree person. I, I've loved trees. Um, I agree with, with, with my commissioner here in regards to, um, I s- there's a lot of trees on this site. So, my, and I know he said he had a pre-application meeting with the staff, so did the staff bring up that requirement of the tree survey? Or even a wildlife, uh, you know, study?
I, I don't believe it was mentioned, but they would have to comply with all the landscape buffers.
And is that in here, but?
It pertains to our land development.
I, I understand the landscape buffer, but what I'm talking about is a tree study. Because there are, yeah, there's a difference. I can understand that, that, but there's a lot of trees on this. Yeah, we need a tree study, cause there's big trees and I will, um, let everybody know that I did drive by this property, cause I know we're supposed to say that. I did drive by that property, um, and it's a very small, and it's a lot of trees. And they're nice big trees. So, I would like as a condition, again, like we did for the, uh, other property, um, with the hotels, to ask for a tree study. I have some concerns, um, there, um, cause I don't, again, this is just a conceptual. Um, I don't see if, you know, if the tree study is saying that there's certain trees there that have to be protected, they're not depicted in here. Uh, and also if there's trees coming down, are they gonna be providing into the tree fund? Or are they gonna be planting trees within this little trail? I think the trail is great, I think that's a nice added touch as an amenity, but I don't see any trees or benches, um, things like that. So, I would like to see that. Then, uh, I see that there's a sidewalk added to the, to, it's, it's a sidewalk, but it just basically ends to the, to the end of that driveway. So, I'm assuming whoever the property owner on this other site, it's a different owner, I'm assuming, right? It's totally different. Unfortunately, you weren't able to buy it to expand. It would've been nice, right? Um, so he's not required to have an additional sidewalk, but I do see a sidewalk, which is great. Um, it's unfortunate that, you know, it's not going straight where we can see people walking to At Home and all that nice, uh, new food that we see at the shopping center now. But, um, again, my biggest concern on this, um, is the tree survey. Should be required based on, uh-
If you'd like, just to clarify for that, part of the code for development is, a site like this that has trees is required to provide a tree inventory, which is your tree study. So, what we do is we look at that tree study, it's gonna come up with a certain number of inches. That has to go back onto the site. If it doesn't fit on the site, then they pay into a tree invent- tree fund. They kinda check, that is part of standard code.
Okay.
It's nothing extra that we, if you'd like, you could put it on the, on the conditional use permit, but it's part of code anyway. They have to go through that process.
Yeah, I just, it's, it just, I understand that. It just makes me more comfortable because, because, um, you know, I'm living now in City of Clermont for three years and I'm driving by all these properties and a lot of our trees are gone.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot.
And every time the financial numbers come up and I look at that tree fund and it's not budgeted, yeah, it's, man, there should be, hmm, a lot of millions in there and there isn't. So, I just, you know, that's my concern. I'm just trying to save our trees and just make Clermont healthier in a sense that shade, you know, less heat. Um, but, you know, I just wanna make sure that, uh, our developers are complying to that, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Neemek.
Yes, uh, I have a few questions. Uh, can I ask the developer to please come back to the microphone? Hello, sir.
Hello.
Uh, is this, there, will there be an HOA?
Yes.
Okay, would there be any future amenities?
Um, yes, actually, we wanna do something nice along the shoreline. And I, and I should say that, um-
Could you point where your future amenities, Michael, on the map?
We'd like to do something-
On the map, sir? So, I could see, so the public can see it as well?
Well, we-
I'm sorry, he's not used to it, so that's, let's be a little ginger with him.
Okay. Well, our, our thinking is we'd like to do, there is a lake beyond
Mm-hmm.
the Stormwater Pond.
I understand.
So, we were thinking maybe some kind of a, um, a dock or a bridge over the Stormwater Pond to the lake. Um, and maybe some kind of, um, walking path here along the bottom of the, of the, uh, project, because it is very beautiful and it's very secluded. And, and I should say that, um, all of this area here, the elevation difference between the At Home and us is huge. This is a big, um,
Yeah, it's a progress, yes, yes.
Um, and this is part of the At Home lot. And, and the At Home's, um, Stormwater Pond is right over here. So, this isn't going to be developed, this is a buffer. It's a natural buffer, um, which, which makes the property very nice. It's very quiet when you're back in there. Um, obviously, some of the trees have to come down. We didn't, we have done a tree census.
I know, I just asked on amenities, sir.
Oh, okay.
So, if you're answering her question, I'll let you, I'll allow that.
Okay. Honestly, we haven't, we haven't really contemplated the amenities package. Um, there's not gonna be a clubhouse or a pool or anything like that.
That's what I was asking, clubhouse, any pickleball courts? Nothing like that, just a walking path and relaxation.
The idea is to keep it very natural.
Okay, I like that idea. Uh, my other concern is what is on the north side? Is that a retention pond, one long retention pond?
Right here?
Nope. That's the north, right there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, that's a sidewalk.
Not the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the road.
Oh, there is kind of a swale.
A swale, so that's, there, you'll be using that as a retention.
Well, uh, the, the runoff from the drive will go into the swale. So, we have to account for the runoff
Right.
from that drive.
Okay, so I was correct by saying-
So, it's going to be, it's not shown in blue, but there's a swale that runs between the sidewalk and the road. It will capture the runoff from that.
Okay, I understand that. Would you be owning the roads or Clermont on the roads?
No, these are private roads that will be owned and ma-
So, this is private?
Owned and maintained by the HOA.
By the HOA. Okay. Uh, since it's owned by the en- HOA, what is your rental policy? Minimum months?
Haven't, you know, like I said, we're, we're, we're interested in, uh, a fee simple product, uh, project. Um, have, we haven't written the HOA documents, we have, I, I don't know.
Okay, so, we'll let you, so obviously, there's no B and B there?
No, there's no intention for a bed and breakfast. No, these are, these are, um, you know, family residences.
Okay, sorry. Answered that one, you answered that one. Major question, where is the egress exit for commercial, I mean, for emergency vehicles?
Ingress and egress is at Grand Highway.
That's one entrance. Where is the second? You're supposed to, staff, is it because of the amount of- Oh, it's, it's, that's why he kept it under twenty?
Yep, it's under the density.
And the reason, would you be able to disclose that to me? Why it's such a long, long entrance?
Yes, it's a very simple answer, that's how the lot is configured.
Okay.
The only way back to that beautiful property on the lake is through the flagpole. And by the way, I'll add, um, Lake County reviewed this too, and there is a, we are putting our section of sidewalk on Grand and it's gonna connect with At Home's sidewalk. So, you can theoretically walk from this project up the sidewalk to At Home.
Yeah, our apologies, cause I was the one that brought that up. It's just that on our picture,
We don't have that on my picture.
We don't, we don't see the sidewalk, we only see just your sidewalk.
It's, it, it's off-site and, and, but Lake County is requiring us to connect their sidewalk to the north and their sidewalk to the south. So, we're going to put in our section of sidewalk and it will link the north and the south, uh, parcels to ours.
Perfect, yeah, cause if you look at that map, it, you can't see a sidewalk and that's the reason-
No, you, you can't. And honestly, the At Home sidewalk right now is all overgrown. It's completely overgrown. People aren't using it right now.
Well, I appreciate that you're adding that, so.
So, I see you have the sidewalk basically located on the east, the northeast side. So, you have four parking spots there. So, you're telling me there is no sidewalks for those guest parking spots?
There's no sidewalks on this side.
It, honestly, it's all integrated, it's relatively low density, the traffic is gonna be so slow and low that, that I, I envision people walking, you know, everywhere.
Simple, simple yes or no would justify what you're saying. So, there was no sidewalk there?
No, there's no internal sidewalks. I would like to put a nature trail around the exterior perimeter, though.
If you have enough room. Alright, no further questions for now, Mr. Chairperson, unless you bring something up.
Thank you. Um, just to piggyback on the sidewalk piece, um, a- across the street from the guest parking, um, doesn't this, the, the, i- is this depicting that the sidewalk continues in front of those units and then goes back to the lift station?
That's right.
Okay, okay.
That's right.
So, so, if they, if someone wanted to go visit someone on that side, they would be able to walk on a sidewalk, but it's to the other two buildings.
That's correct.
To what Mr. Neemek was, I think, questioning on, on the other side. Okay, okay. Um, also clarification, cause I was under the impression that this was not fee simple, that this was a, a multi, uh, multifamily, um, uh, unit, because there's a trash enclosure. Uh, and if this is fee simple, then these folks are gonna have, um, trash receptacles and they're gonna be serviced because they're gonna pay that.
Possibly, I suppose, um, a partner and I are gonna own this. And, and what we're going to do is half the units will belong to him and half will belong to me. And our, my intention was to make them each fee simple and I'd like to put each of my sons in a, in a townhome. And, uh, help launch them, they're just getting out of college and help launch them into the world. And I thought this would be, it's also a great way for them to get to know my business. So, we're working on this as a family. And, um, so I want each unit to be owned individually. Now, I may own a building of five units, but each unit will be fee simple.
Okay, so, so, there are twenty units, there, th- th- these are going to be considered twenty single-family residences with twenty sing- twenty individual alternate key IDs, twenty different tax bills, twenty different, uh, garbage and recycling bin collections, twenty different everything, correct? If they're si- if they're fee simple, I don't know if that's for staff or for the developer, but if, uh, because I, I, I think I was under the impression that this was more of a rental community than a single-family residence community, um, where these were going to be fee simple individual units, um, and each one being a different tax ID and parcel ID or alternate key ID.
Yes, the footprint will be its own tax ID. And so, if you buy a townhome in this community, you will own the footprint. And then everything else will be held in common by the HOA.
Okay, is that, for staff, is that what we have before us?
The conceptual that you have is for a multifamily.
So, it's not for fee simple?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's, yeah, cause I'm, so I, I want to make sure we're, we're actually approving what the developer is indicating they wanna present or, um, or propose, which is a fee simple twenty individual parcels, uh, which may then require some looking at, okay, how does city, uh, city services like trash and recycling get through that area and collect in that area rather than just collect from a trash enclosure? Um, so I guess my question to the developer would be, um, or to the applicant would be, do we need to, uh, postpone this and, and bring it back at a different time so that you can work with staff to make sure we actually have what you're wanting to present to us in front of us?
I'm not sure I, I appreciate or understand the conflict, uh, here. I mean, if, if, if staff directs me to use the bins, then we'll, we'll, I mean, the garbage trucks can navigate the street systems.
Right, but what we haven't, this, this conceptual in front of us is a multifamily unit like an apartment complex. This is not for twenty lots of twenty individual parcel IDs and alternate key IDs and taxable lots. This is one parcel that happens to have twenty units on it.
Okay.
And what you're, I think, is, what you're saying to us is that you're gonna have twenty lots and then a, essentially a twenty-first lot that is the community's lot that has all the amenities and road and everything else?
Really, honestly, uh, the way I was thinking it, I mean, is we would condoize these as we needed to. I mean, if I'm gonna own a whole building, um, then maybe I don't need to condoize it. I, I, I don't know, we hadn't, we hadn't gotten to the point where that decision had been made. I, I wasn't aware that we needed to make that decision now.
So, I guess, again, I'll go back to staff. Where are we, I, this is, this is kind of a new, uh, this is not common for us. We typically have either a multifamily or a single-family, but not a, it's going to be either or. So, how do we proceed with this?
Well, if it is a multifamily, I guess I would ask you, okay, um, what, what are your thoughts? What's, what's the issue with it being a multifamily?
There's, I don't, I, 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 I'm not saying that there's an issue.
Okay.
What I'm hearing, what I'm seeing in writing and hearing in words don't match.
Well, we're still trying to figure that out.
Okay, but, but we need to, I think we need to, as a planning and zoning commission, know, are we approving a con- conditional use permit for twenty houses, single-family residences and twenty parcels? Or are we approving basically apartment-style living, multifamily living? And I think our code handles those things differently. And so, we would handle our review and decision of those differently. So, I wanna make sure that we're, we're fair and equitable to you, but also to our code and to make sure that we have the, I guess, the correct information in front of us. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, it's, 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 Christian, it's like the new concept that we see now, which is the bill to rent, which are fee simple, but they all own them and rent them out.
Well, that's fine, but, but these are, this, this is not a fee simple, twenty fee simple units, this is a-
Well, he's saying it's fee simple.
But that's not what's in front of us.
Has it been platted? Has it been platted yet?
I, I don't know.
I agree with what he's saying, that's why I made sure I had to ask if it was for rent or for sale. And he brought up the fee simple. He was gonna keep-
If I may, Mr. Chair, and he just said, quoted, saying he's gonna buy five units. So, if he's gonna buy five units out of twenty, that's one quarter he's gonna own as his developer. And he, most likely, he's not gonna live in five units, he's gonna rent those five units out. That's on his ten. What, what is his partner gonna do?
And I, I think I'm, I'm, potentially, I'm, I understand there's, there's that concern, but I think conceptually, from a conditional use permit, are we approving a, a multifamily non-fee simple? Or are we approving a twenty fee simple parcels uni- uh, project?
Okay, well, I need the ability to sell the units one-off.
Okay, so-
Okay, I, I want that, I want that privilege, that right. So, if that means it's fee simple, then it's fee simple.
I think, that's, that is what it means.
Yeah, that's what it means, so it'd have to be a fee simple project.
Ultimately, you're gonna have to plat this.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right? I said, so you're looking for approval through the CUP before you get into the plat process essentially?
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah. And the point of the plat would be to create those, those lots.
Right.
So to city staff, i- is this our process by, the vehicle to get to that? Or would this come to us in a different fashion if, if, if we're looking at fee simple in the endgame here?
You know, in terms of that one review this, I know the dumpster question came up. If you look at our code, dumpsters are for multifamily, not fee simple. If it was fee simple, then they would have their own cans. In terms of reviewing this, we would need to know the size of the lot or the plat underneath, like we've done at Clermont Yacht Club.
Yeah.
And in several of the other locations. And that was not presented to us. We were looking at it as multifamily. And again, that's something that just was brought to our attention.
Just.
So in terms of, it would have to be looked at a little differently in terms of that. And it's just, again, we reviewed it as a multifamily project in terms of the dumpsters, in terms of, you know, the, the private roads, stuff like that, so.
Okay, so I think then, perhaps, unless the, the applicant wants us to consider this and approve this as a multifamily, rather than giving him the ability to consider this to be single-family and sell off parcels and, and, and lots, that we need to table this to our next meeting so that we can bring this back with that, that CUP. Is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Table it to the next meeting.
Okay. And that is October?
Seventh.
Seventh, okay. So I guess I would entertain a, a motion to table till October 7th.
I'll set a motion.
I'm sorry, I will set a motion to have this tabled, resolution 2025-026R, tabled to the next P and Z meeting, which should be October, somebody help me out with it, 7th? I thought it was the 6th. October 7th.
Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Commissioner May. Any final discussion? All those in favor to table till October 7th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, motion carries 6-0. And then I think, I'm assuming Mr. Henshaw and, and staff, Mr. Gonzalez, you guys will work with, with applicant. And that way, we, we know what we're actually looking at and addressing here so that we can make sure that we're all operating from the same standpoint. Okay, item number four, ordinance number 2025-032, land development code amendment. And before we get too far, I, I know this was a late add to the agenda, and so I wanted to ask the city attorney to just talk a little bit about timing and notices and legalities and so forth, so that, because I know it's come up in questions and conversations.
I, I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chair. So the, the issue is, as probably most, if not all of you know, it arose as a, almost like a public thing, you know? And frankly, there's a flag out there that's hard to miss. So it, it became an issue that we had to look at as, on the staff. The city did have a code enforcement case pending, not about the flag, but about the pole. All right? And that, that case has subsequently been withdrawn, I believe. I don't believe that case is pending. Is that case pending?
We've pulled it back for now.
It's pulled back, it's not on the agenda. It's not on the next agenda. So what's happened is someone on the city council has requested an amendment to the city code that he believes will address this issue. And that got to staff. We've taken a look at it, it's gone through multiple people. This was at the very end of last week. This is a, not just politically sensitive, it's constitutionally sensitive issue. So what you have in front of you is not what I would call a finished product. It would benefit from your review and your consideration. And the reason why it's on your agenda now instead of later, after it's been given more thought by staff, is the fact that it is pressing. A lot of people want to do something about this, and we've been asked to take care of it. So the Planning and Zoning Commission, in order for you to make recommendation on ordinance, you don't have the same advertising requirements that the city council has. So city council has a statute, and it has to run in the paper at least once. You don't have that requirement. Now, traditionally, your staff has done that for you, which is a great, it's above and beyond what's required under the law. And it helps get us public input, it helps get all the feedback that you need. So that step has been skipped. We've done the legally, the, the minimum required in terms of notice in the interest of possibly getting it to the city council agenda as soon as possible. Now, as I've indicated you before, you'll see, for example, the Councilman Howard had an idea about how he wanted to address it, that's in your packet, it's in the agenda packet. And the version that's in front of you is slightly different. The reason, again, is that it's gone through multiple stages of review very quickly, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as they come about, but really, we're looking for your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. I'm sure the, my fellow commissioners do as well. And so then we have before us the item, ordinance number 2025-032. Is there a presenter for this item?
I, I think you've got it.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I didn't know if there was a process here, if, if, if the council member was going to be here, or, okay. So then we will then move directly into public portion of the meeting. So is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak to ordinance number 2025-032, land development code amendment? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone here to speak on this item, item number four, ordinance number 2025-032? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the commission, and we will start then with Commissioner Kramer.
Thank you, Commissioner Vane. All right, Chairman, I, I understand and respect the intent of ordinance 2025-022, and I, I believe we should proceed with caution. Allowing unlimited flagpole heights without permits would create unintended issues, and I do realize that we now have the freedom to display the American Flag Act of 2005, provides federal protection to flag displays, but we have existing code and ordinances already in place. I, I don't want to get political, and this feels to me a little bit like pandering right now. You know, we've got a, we've got a big flag out there, and what are we going to do about it? And even more so, are more of these big flags going to crop up? I, I proudly display the American flag in front of my house. I have it with lights on it at night, so I, you know, I make sure that I have, have the lights on it. I'm proud to display that flag. But to me, this, I, I don't know that this ordinance is, is, is necessary. We have existing code which already allows flag displays within reasonable limits. And I know that the bigger the flag, the prouder American you are, but, you know, are we going to make the same accommodation for other flags? And the American flag is very clearly protected, but can we have a big, you know, flag out there representing other people's interests? So, and I also feel that, that this weakens our oversight by, you know, removing the permit requirements. I'm going to wait and see what the rest of the commission says on this, but to me, it feels a lot like pandering right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoyzington.
I'm not understanding this with my fellow commissioners. I don't understand the need to change the code. And at what point was the exemption that if someone should say they want to go beyond 30 feet? Like, where do we stop? I'm going to wait and hear what everyone else has to say, because I'm just not understanding.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Tadona.
All right, so this one is a tough one, all right? I'll, I'll just read off my notes as I read through this. And I'm sorry to start it like this, but in light of some of the gray area that was written into SB 180, I would agree with my fellow commissioners that we really need to try to whittle down the gray area here so that no one can exploit this, okay? So let's make sure the wording is right. My question would be, was a permit filed for that pole? Do we know how high that pole is? Do we know how high the pole is?
We do not have a confirmation of the height of the pole. I believe it was verbally conveyed to us 130 feet.
Okay. So, and a permit was not applied, so it's, so that thing was just put in the ground?
That's correct.
Okay, it hasn't been approved, it hasn't been denied, just put in the ground?
That's exactly where we're at, yes.
All right, so let me come back to that. There is an equally very nice flag that flies over Toyota on 50. Do we know anything about the size of that pole?
Yes, we do.
Well, how high is that pole?
100 feet.
100 feet. Was that granted a variance? Was, is there a permit, or is that just put in the ground?
That was done when it was in the county.
Yes, sir.
We have indication that it did get a permit for that one.
So it has an approved permit?
I haven't put my eyes on it. Everything we've read about it, it does, yes.
Okay. So would it be safe to say that that acts as a precedence, and so the highest flag pole in our area is about 100 feet?
Want to defer to Mr. Wa over there if it's as far as precedence.
No, technically, it's not a precedent.
But it's been approved?
I don't know who approved it. It wasn't.
It was definitely Lake County.
Yeah, it was not the city.
Yes, it was not the city.
All right, so then that, that, thank you for that, because it was, and just bear with me, I'm not the legalese. So it may have been approved by Lake County, but it wasn't approved by the city of Clermont, which is going to be very interesting, because as we know, sometimes the city and the county property kind of like overlap in here. So that begs the question, and I'm sorry, is the Toyota property on Lake County property or the city of Clermont property?
After it was completely developed, the flagpole was up, it was a dealership, it was annexed into the city, so we took it all in.
Okay, so that flagpole was basically grandfathered into the city?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, okay. I'm sure we've all read some regulations or proper handling of, of, of the flag. We all know it cannot touch the ground. Depending on the height of the flagpole, there may or may need to be lights. I don't know if we've actually reached out to any kind of color guard or honor guard to find out how the flag should be treated. Again, I'm just reading my notes, so just play, please bear with me. I think one of the concerns is, because I, on the way here, I passed by Camping World, and that is one, that, that flag is bigger than my house, okay? And I enlisted the day after 9/11. I served that flag honorably for 15 years, so I am not up here to talk badly about it. I guess part of my concern is, when a flagpole goes 100 feet, 130 feet, and I understand that there's going to be engineering behind it, how far deep is it into the ground? Can it withstand a Cat 5 hurricane? What happens if that flag becomes a sail? What happens if a flag, and, and if this is exploited, if somebody does something silly and stupid with this? Do we get involved if your flag, and I'm just throwing this out there, is flying over my property? Okay? Is there a, an airway right? I mean, I even found FAA documents that say if it's 200 feet, you got to get FAA approval, and it's got to be, and not that we are, it's got to be outside of a 20,000-foot radius in case you're near, nearby airport, so you're not in a flight line. And we're not. Leesburg International Airport's about 25 miles away. So again, FAA, Cat 5, what happens if you're? Listen, I, I love my neighbors in Fox Chase, and I trim their trees that crawl over my, my fence. I don't care, it's okay. I don't break anybody's chops. Like I said, I might be the anomaly. If you've got this 40 by 60-foot flag waving over your house, you might, you know, or whatever, you might worry about what it's going to whip into, is it going to pull something? Is it going to create damage, all right? In my opinion, also, the American flag shouldn't be used for political gain or as a tourist attraction. So I'm sorry. Don't come down to my place of business so you could see this 40 by 60, and then I'm going to grab you in with a free doughnut and buy you an RV, okay? That, that just doesn't fly with me. Going back to the first question, and I'm sorry to be so elongated, but you asked for it. The fact that we have something on a 130-foot pole that hasn't been approved, that I will defer back to my fellow commissioner, we've already got codes here, and the code says 55 feet. So if you want to fly something as grand as an American flag, instead of like testing our limits, put up four 50-foot poles and fly your flags. I work at John Young on 50. On the way home, I pass plenty of org, buildings and, and commercial establishments that have more than one flagpole on their property flying the American flag. Nobody is out there putting up this 200-foot or 130-foot flagpole and flying one flag. So I understand about the Constitution, I understand about his First Amendment right to express himself, but I think this is overdoing it. I think the two states that he's in, or the two cities that he's in are, they're already complaining about it. I have two flags in my house. I fly one flag. I don't have a light, so I bring it in at night, and I have a flag in my garage. I have a flag as my screensaver. I mean, honestly, Chair, that's all I really got. I, I don't know, I don't want to say, oh, boy. It, it's a tough spot, but, and, you know, the American flag should be the size of the moon, and we should all respect that flag for all the folks that came before us and sacrificed for that flag. But I just think in this particular case, where there is a code, if I was coming in to build a, a building and I wanted to put up a flagpole, I would be looking to see how far I could go. I'm just not going to say 55 feet is not high enough, I'm going up 130 feet, and you guys deal with it. So maybe the approach should have been different to the city of Clermont, because then maybe another conversation could have been said, listen, dude, we've got a 100-footer outside of Toyota, and we'll deal with, you know, we could give you 100. But there doesn't seem to have been any negotiation, and I think all of that is being hidden behind the greatest emblem that this country knows. That's me.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
So I liked this as a different approach, and, and I do agree with all the commissioners here that, you know, we do have a code. They did not come to you all for a permit. If they would have applied for a permit, I bet you 100% that permit, maybe we would have said no, but the city council would have probably said yes.
Like a variance?
A variance, yeah. So, I mean, that could have been just a simple, hey. But he didn't do that, unfortunately. And he not only did he not do it here, but he also did not do it in Greenville, North Carolina, or San Joaquin. or San Joaquin County, California. Those two places, I think you had mentioned two, I think there's another one. He did this, Camping World did the same, where they put up a 130-foot pole. And in Greenville, they have a 3,200 square foot American flag flying. That's the size of my house. If that thing flew, that would cover my house, that would cover like 300, I mean, two cars. I mean, it could cause an accident, but anyways. The point here is, he didn't do the permit, we have the situation, the city is looking at us for a recommendation, which is funny, because sometimes we do recommendations, and they're not heard, they're actually changed. So for me, it's like, okay, well, what I can do is provide what I think, and hopefully, somebody will listen on the council, hopefully. So this is what I found out. Greenville, North Carolina decided to amend their code. And we're not Greenville, we're City of Clermont. They decided to say, okay, we're going to amend to the 130 feet and allow for the 3,200 square feet. What I see here is that, for them, they actually had a definition, a maximum of a flag size and a maximum of a pole size. But in regards to this recommendation, there is no maximum. So that's why I think, John, when you were bringing up the permit of Toyota being kind of like a good segue of a maximum, or maybe it is the 130 feet as our maximum. I, you know, I, I just can't, I just can't recommend something without a, a ceiling. Because for me, and I think I've said it over a couple of emails that I've sent to staff in regards to what I think, you know, there's a difference also in regards to non-residential and residential districts. So I can see in a non-residential zoning district, and we don't have that separation in here, I can see 130-foot pole, especially on a main corridor. But if we don't have that exemption on a residential zoning district, and I know HOAs are protected because of Florida Statute 720, I believe, right, 304, where it limits it to 20 feet in an HOA, but at 25? But in a non-HOA, I can just picture, maybe one, two, can you imagine 10 flagpoles at 200 feet or 130 feet, wherever the council decides to, or, sorry, it's unlimited. A 400-foot flagpole in a residential property. So I just, you know, I would like to see a separation between non-residential and residential. I think that is the key there. Not having a permit, and I understand, I guess the councilman's, he's, he's, I can understand why he put that in there, but my problem with that is that we have to have a way to know who is putting up a flagpole. So even if it's not, we don't consider it a permit, maybe in an application, but it can be a simple, just like the tree permit, it's so simple, it's a one-pager. And it basically says, this is who I am, this is where I live, this is what I plan to do. Then it tells the city, oh, we're, we got a 130-foot pole going at Bob Evans. That then requires the city to ask for the structural integrity through the licensed structural engineer, because my problem is, how are you asking this person? You're not going to know who's putting up a flagpole if there's no permit, no application. So how does someone know to provide a licensed structured engineer? And the only way they know that is maybe by reading the code, but some people don't read these codes. You know, maybe they'll call and say...
Many do not read the codes.
Huh?
Many people do not read the codes.
Thank you. So, so, so many people who won't read the code would say, okay, well, I'm going to put a flagpole, hey, I don't need to do it, because I'm putting an American flag on it, I'm exempt, I don't have to do a permit, so, you know, that's it. But they're not going to know, because there's no piece of paper, you know? So that's the only thing, and maybe don't call it a permit, maybe a permit's a bad word, but an application of some sort. Let me see. And that also, and that holds also true in regards to enforcement, because we are exempting poles only if they have an American flag. So what if somebody decides to put a 200-foot flagpole, and they put a POW or a non-American flag? How does that get enforced?
As, as it's written, it violates the code, and the pole would be in violation, they could start a code case.
Okay.
If they had, the way it's written, if they have an American flag and one of those flags, it's not a violation.
But are they allowed to have both flags on one pole?
It is, under, under this section, yes.
But is that the right way? I mean, I... It would be nice to have...
That's for you to determine.
No, and it's, it's nice to have maybe the color guard to be consulted with. They, they understand, you know, everything that deals with the waving, it can't be dirty, it can't be touching the, you know, I think having a color guard consultant would be helpful to you all.
Just for clarification, the, the code does allow three flags to be flown on one parcel, but the American flag has to be there.
So it does allow for three?
Yes, it's supposed to be flown...
But it, but you have to have the American flag to be exempt to this.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to...
Yes.
As written.
As written, it has to, so Bob Evans can build a 200 that he can tell you, hey, I'm putting an American flag, but then he doesn't, he puts a Bob Evans flag, so then...
Then he'd be in violation.
He's in violation. But the only way to figure, figure that out is by having an application. Let's not call it a permit, because maybe that's a bad word. An application, the city says, oh, Bob Evans is putting a 200-foot, that's great, let's ask for the structured engineer, boom, it's in the file, they comply. You know, and then code enforcement will be out there and say, oh, they still have the American flag, perfect, they're complying. So that's, I think the recommend, oh no, I think I have some more. Maximum height, size of flag, there's no mention of a size of flag. I know there is mention of size of flags in other codes that I've seen in other cities, but there's no mention of any size of flag, so I don't know if that was considered...
In the, for the flagpoles that are 55 and lower, there is in the code.
Right, but what about the ones that are 56 and over?
Did a lot of research myself, and there's, they're all just recommendations.
Okay.
The largest I saw was 30 by 60 on a, like a 100 and, I think it's 150-foot tall pole.
Right, so who makes that recommendation in regards to size? I mean, that makes a difference when it comes to structural, because those, those hookers, the bigger they are, the heavier they get.
Oh, sure, wind load increases.
Yeah. So, I mean, I would consider adding also a flag size, as well as the maximum height.
So that you could fly it at half mast as well?
Mm-hmm.
Or, yeah, as long as it doesn't touch the floor. So, application, no permit word, but application or checklist, I know you love checklists. I think, I don't think I have anything else besides what I sent you all via email. I think that's it in regards to recommendations. I think they're good recommendations, I'm a proud American, my uncles fought in the war, I love that flag, so what you guys decide, please put a ceiling on it. A max, that's all I ask, and separate the non-residential to the residential. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Neemek?
Yes. May I just add a couple of things quickly? So, good point, if the flag is going to be at half mast, if it's too large, it still can't touch the ground. I think the other thing to consider too is, and I'm not an engineer by any stretch of the imagination, but at 100 feet, 130 feet, 200 feet, the width of that pole has to get larger towards the ground. Now, back in the day, for every two feet you went up, you had to go a foot in the ground. So that 130-foot pole, and again, I'm not an engineer, is it 65 feet in the ground? Is it encased in concrete, is there rebar? Because to Commissioner, Commissioner's point, if we start willy-nilly-ing this, and somebody wants to put a 100-foot pole on a piece of property that might not be anchored properly, if that thing comes down, she's now 100 feet somewhere else that it's fallen upon. So the application is a great idea, somebody might have to do a site survey, we already know 55 feet is acceptable, and again, at the risk of being repetitive, if I'm up at 130 feet, I, I don't know, nobody knows anything about this flag that's flying at 130 feet, about the pole, about, you know, how it's stuck in the ground, that it might not move. So, and I, I thank you for that, I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you, sorry about that. Commissioner Neemek?
Yes, Council, I have a question. Are we, because I've read this package so many times. Are we talking about Camping World, or are we talking about the size of the pole? Because I heard one, two commissioners off to my left talk about Camping World. I haven't seen Camping World written on this. This is strictly, you can't assume, okay? This is an ordinance, we're going with the height of the pole, correct? Am I right by saying that?
I'm not sure what your question is.
My question is, are we talking about Camping World? Are we talking about what the ordinance says is the height of the pole?
I mean, I think we're talking about both.
Okay, now I'm really, now you really confuse me, because... Alright, let me go for it. Florida Chapter 720 HOA ordinances, not ordinances, but the rule says, like Commissioner May stated, you cannot go, you can overwrite what your governing documents state, because it's a flagpole, and you're allowed to hang a flagpole, as long as the United States' flag is on top. Also states that you could have an armed services and a POW, that is it. Now that's the Florida state that set those rules. We're not experts up here, we're Plan and Zoning Commission, that's number one. They have a height requirement, I don't see a height requirement, but I know for a fact there's a 55 height requirement of buildings in Clermont. That's well-being said, Wellness Way decided to come along in our backyard and build 80, eight-story buildings. So that's where we ran into the problem with the car dealership. We annexed it, we annexed the problem. We're not here to complain about what's over here and what's over there. We have something in front of us, we had, that Clermont's asking us for our opinion and advice to pass this, okay? So that explains exact, I'm trying to comprehend how, alright, I get it, Camping World, there's a big beautiful flag there, I love the flag, we all in this room love the flag, okay? But number one, what I'm hearing, and I have to ask staff, they put this in without even permission, or did they put it in and get denied and put it in again?
They didn't come to us at all.
Okay, thank you. So there was no engineer report done to see if this is safe or not, correct?
We don't have any paperwork on it.
Thank you, thank you. So that's a violation right there, okay? Now, I believe that we have antennas that are the same height as this, two of them, one by racetrack or Taco Bell, and the other one by the Catholic Church by the ball field. They both have American flags on it. That's because it's camouflaged like that, some use trees, some use flagpoles.
Are you referring to the cell towers out there?
Yeah, the cell towers, I'm sorry, I didn't see, I'm sorry.
They're considered, some of them are considered camouflage towers in the form of a flagpole.
Correct. So there is no limit size, that's what I'm asking, is there an ordinance for a limit size on a cell tower of a flag?
They all have some form of a conditional use permit that limits the height of them, yes.
What about the size of the flag?
I'm not aware of the size of the flag.
In other words, what I'm asking, does that fall under federal exemption?
Under the recommendation of the size of the flag, yes, that's what we would, we would defer to, yes.
Okay, I understand that. So if I'm not mistaken, didn't we have a problem with the one on 12th Avenue that was told to remove the flag from the cell tower?
I'm not, I believe there was one that was tattered and asked to be replaced, if that's what you're referring to?
Not tattered, it was asked to be removed, because it didn't belong there on the cell phone tower back in the days. I mean, you've been in Clermont for a long time.
Yeah.
You should know that, it's right down the block.
I don't recall the specific scenario.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's a fair answer, Kurt, I'm not going to test you on that. Alright, I'm looking at this, and the only loopholes that I see, general flagpoles should be in 30-foot height. Okay, it says the height there, but it's exempt if it's an American flag. So I would recommend to the council, since our buildings are only 55 feet in height, make the height of a pole 55 feet, unless it's a cell tower. It's plain and cut dry, simple.
And Commissioner, I would offer to you, I, I think that's a mistake in the draft in front of you, that it says 30 as it is, because we have another code section that does say 55.
Exactly, yes.
We can't have both.
That's...
So really, what's in front of you, no matter what happens, if, well, I should say, if you decide to recommend it in any form, it should say, well, in this form, it should be 55. It'll have to be amended, that is true.
That's why, thought I read, that's why I brought that up, okay? That's number one. Number two, he's, they're just asking, because this happens, alright? Now, we're going to go after this guy, because, I mean, we're not, now since you say we're talking about Camping World, his past is really bad, he was told not to do it in other counties, and he did it, he snobbed us, alright? One thing I don't stand is somebody who hides behind the American flag, okay? Landed a free and home of the brave, that is not being brave, okay? So I praise Mr. Kurt Henshals, who's in charge of code enforcement, go after him. Go after him big time, okay? And I'm, and I'll, I'll say that in front of the camera. This, you're putting the safety at the Clermont residents at risk. That's all I have to say for now, Comish, I mean, Mr. Chairman. I just, I don't understand, I don't see anything in here saying something about Camping World, and we're talking about Camping World, but since you said we could talk about it, I thought we had to ask permission.
Yeah, alright, well, and to your, to your question, Commissioner Neemek, and to your point, I, I, this is not specific to Camping World, it is stemming from the Camping World flag. And I, I, I mean, we don't have Councilmember Howard here tonight to, to say that, but if, if I'm reading social media posts correctly, that is why this is before us. That, that this is before us because of the Camping World flag. And that, that the, I believe the intent, and again, I'm basing it off of what has been written in social media, is that this would then allow that specific flagpole and flag display to proceed without any code enforcement action. Because this would change the code. So it didn't, it would, it would essentially say, it does not matter that they did not apply for a permit, or it does not matter that they did not meet our code. Because we've changed it, we would allow them to have that, because we have no, as this is currently written, if there is a, an American flag on a pole, there is no height restriction. So long as, so long as it complies with FAA rules and regs, there's a structural integrity of the flagpole that's certified by a licensed structural engineer, that it meets all setback requirements unless waived by a variance, and it displays the flag consistent with the flag code, which would include lighting, half mast, no tattered, proper, proper care and concern for the flag, et cetera, all of those requirements. If it meets those four things, that pole is exempt from our height restrictions as written in this ordinance, okay? In addition to that, this ordinance also says, poles and structures erected solely for the display of the flag of the United States... the display of the flag of the United States of America are exempt from permit requirements. So, I read that as, if I'm going to put up a, let's say I want to do a 100-foot pole, and I want one of the flags to be the, the flag of the United States of America, okay? Then if that's the case, my height restriction is exempt if this is in, if this is the law of Claremont. But because it's not solely the American flag, I have to apply for a permit. So, if you're mischievous or devious in nature, you might say, hey, this pole is just for the flag of the United States of America, and then fly whatever else you want on it so that you don't have to pay for a permit. Now, would we, would we catch them potentially? But our code enforcement typically does not go out and drive around and look at every parcel for every violation. It's typically something that comes to the attention of. And then potentially to, to kind of where Mr. Waugh was stating, then we now run into a situation where someone can say, under this ordinance, well, how can you make this just for the American flag? And I think we all feel very strongly about displaying the flag, but how can you make this just about that flag constitutionally? How is that legal? I should be able to do my Bob Evans flag with my American flag at 150 feet and not need a permit and not have a height restriction. Because, hey, under constitutionality, a flag is a flag. You have to apply it from a viewpoint neutral standpoint. I think that's the, the potential issues. Now, we would need someone to challenge us to that and, and take us to court for that. Obviously, that's, you know, that's up to someone to do if this were to be approved. But I think that's what potentially this sets us up for by kind of creating two, two categories of, of poles and two categories of permits depending upon if the United States, flag of the United States of America is included or not. And I think that's the concern I'm hearing potentially from some of you. You know, I, I moved to Claremont from Sheboygan, Wisconsin, where the, the largest flag in the, I think it's the nation, right? It's a, because it's a, it's a US flag. 400-foot pole, 400-foot pole, the flag is 70 by 40. It's 9,800 and square, 9,800 square feet.
70 by 140.
And, and it weighs 250 pounds.
Thank you.
Okay? So, let's just say that if it's, if it's a 9,800-square-foot flag at 250 pounds, and the flag here that is currently not in compliance, we think based off of the fact that we think a county permit was, it was indicated that county permit was given for the Toyota and was grandfathered in. So, this was the only one that would potentially be out of compliance. If it's 130-foot tall at 3,200 square feet, which is what the Greenville, North Carolina situation is for Camping World, which by the way, that's three-quarters the size of a high school basketball court, that we're probably looking at a flag that weighs, what? 100 or more pounds?
148.
Right? That in Wisconsin, I will tell you, I've seen a lot of weird weather in Wisconsin, but I've never seen a hurricane. And so, not to mention what that flag will then do potentially in, as Mr. Tadona mentioned, hurricane winds. And I will tell you that, that, that flag, if anyone's interested, it's on US 43 in Sheboygan at Acuity Insurance, and it's open to the public. There's Memorial, there's everything. But they take that flag down in high wind situations, in proper compliance with the code. They make a very big deal about this. And, and it is able to be flown at half mast.
So, the other thing to your point is, which we haven't really covered, and I don't know if it's, we even want to, sorry, I get into my tangents, but how do you maintain or have to maintenance that flag?
Oh.
So, just the cherry picker alone that's going to get you up to 130 feet, we all know you've got to drop your legs down and, you know, do we have a potential OSHA problem?
Yeah, and I agree with that. And part of, part of me says, it's not my concern if a private, you know, if we pass this, it's up to the private business. They've got to figure it out if they want to put one up, right? But my concern to Commissioner May's point is, how does, how does someone know that they even need to provide a structural engineer report and comply with that if there's no process? So, we're just, now we're putting even more on our city staff and our code enforcement staff and our planning and development staff to try to figure out, okay, there, here's a flag, here's a pole, it has an American flag, doesn't have an American flag, which section of the code does it apply? Can it be flown? Is it in compliance with the flag code? Now, our city staff is deciding whether or not something's in compliance with the flag code, because that's what we've put in here as one of the four things that need to be met in order for it to be exempt from the height restriction. I just, I feel like, I understand that there is a desire to want to have proud display of the flag of the United States of America. Absolutely, 100% without a doubt. Is there a way to do that that does not jeopardize potential safety and security of people driving on a United States highway that if this thing did come off, will most likely end up on or Not to mention a structure where there is a, a school, where, where children are housed during the day, during the week. I, I just, and to Commissioner May's point about, like, there are HOAs that are going to govern some things, but there's a, a large section of our city that's not an HOA that would apply by this. So, essentially down Mini-Haha Avenue, you could have a 100-footer, 150-footer, a 300-footer, as long as a structural engineer says it's okay.
And it has an American.
And it has an American flag. So, I, I, I just, I think, I, I get maybe where the, the desire to protect display of the flag is appropriate. I, I do have some concerns about the, the constitutionality and legalities of, of the venture, and also the safety, security pieces of it, and also the, the additional requirements we're now putting on city staff to say, you now have to verify it complies with these things, rather than just maybe creating a situation where it's a, a reasonable height that is allowable, and especially in commercial or industrial areas that maybe delineates between residential and commercial and industrial. And also, I'm ticked off because this is not Camping World's, this, this, they didn't just appear in Claremont and do this out, out of the whim, out of, out of proud display, regardless of what their CEO says. This is now a pattern, and we are falling into that pattern. And my concern is that, that now, you know, we're essentially saying to a, a, a big business that, hey, don't worry about complying with whatever the rules are, and, and we're cloaking it in patriotism because this one happens to involve the US flag, and saying, it's okay, well, you know, if it, if it invokes our spirit and our fighting country spirit and nature, we're going to allow it, or we're just going to rewrite the rules for you.
Well, I'm sure if we shut off his water and electricity, he'd come to the bargaining table.
Yeah. Well, I, and I'm not suggesting that, but I, I do have, I just, I, I have some constitutionality. I have some of those concerns. I share some of the same things. I, I worry that, that, you know, we potentially are creating, we've, we've gone from a scenario to now a potential situation over here of, of code. When this, you know, if we take a breath, we realize, yes, there's a strong need to address certain things, and I understand urgency and timing, but in, in rushing to that, are we potentially creating more problems for our staff and for our community from a safety, security standpoint and a legality, constitutionality standpoint? And not maybe sitting down with staff, sitting down with, with experts and figuring out, okay, maybe this 55 thing doesn't quite work everywhere in our community, where can we allow some poles that, that increase that height, that allow for a prouder, larger display of the United States' flag? And, and, and deal with Camping World through our variance and application and permit process, and have them prove that these, that it is okay structurally to, to, to display so that we can be all proud of it, and it can be a focal point for everyone. They could have done that, just like anyone else who wanted to go about doing something that didn't meet our code, regardless of whether it was flagpole or not. Yes?
I have a couple of quick questions for counsel. So, we, a lot of this seems to be around the 2005 Freedom to Display the American Flag Act, but does that cover businesses? I believe that that act is specifically there to cover HOAs and prohibit them from putting anything there, but my understanding is, the act does not apply to business like Camping World or any other commercial entities. So, while you do a little research.
No, I, I have some notes. You're talking about the freedom of display, which we reference, which is referenced in the ordinance.
Correct.
No, I mean, it's, it's not, it does not cover commercial properties.
Exactly. So, we're trying to, so, so if I go out and do something wrong, I'll just petition, you know, maybe I'll just go build me a tennis court next to my house, and then, once somebody realizes I'm out of code, well, I'll just come in front of Planning and Zoning and ask for a variance to allow my, my tennis court to be put in, it'll be okay after I've, see, I have a real problem with going back and changing the law to fix a problem that somebody else, and again, again, as, as Chairman Bay has stated, this Camping World group has a, a pattern of trying to make small towns like us look like we're anti-American because we try to, try to enforce our existing code. So, now we've got to come back in, and as, as Commissioner Tadona said, we have no idea whether this thing was put in properly. That thing could fall down at any time, because we did not have the oversight ahead of time. And now we're going to try to go back in and paint all of us as un-American because we don't, you know, we want to hold the, the rules. When this person, when this developer or owner went in and just did whatever they wanted to, they had a, I mean, it's not just, it's multiple small towns across the country that they have done this, and they're making a political statement, grandstanding, and now, you know, Commissioner Howard, shame on him, but coming back and saying, let's, let's change the law to make these people okay? That's pandering. And I have a real problem with, with this whole thing. The law was set up to protect homeowners and HOAs, not businesses. So, to reference this act is a desperate grasp, a desperate grasp at straws to try to, you know, retrofit what they did in the past. So, that specifically does not cover businesses. And yet, we're going to reference this act in here. I think we've just put a whole lot of work on our, our team. We have ordinances, we have, we have everything in place that we need right now. Next question. If somebody wants to put in, and so this is my naivete, if I wanted to build a flag currently, and I wanted to do that, the process would be, I would come before Planning and Zoning, correct, and ask for a conditional use permit? Or what would be, I'm not sure what would be appropriate, variance, if I wanted to put this in now based on our laws? If I wanted to put that flagpole, I'm at the yacht club. If I want to put 100, 200-foot flagpole at the yacht club...
We would recommend you come in for a variance request.
Exactly. Exactly. So, there's already a process in place to handle this, and if Camping World had followed that, we wouldn't be having this discussion. We wouldn't have Commissioner Ho, or, or Mr. Howard trying to retrofit, put something from us to retrofit something that somebody's already done. I have a real problem with this. I'm, I am not in favor.
Yes, please.
Staff, all right, I understand Toyota was annexed in. The Jeep dealership, is that annexed in as well?
Trying to recall.
To your recol, okay, that's, I'm testing you. I'm sorry.
I, I actually researched the Toyota today. I did not research the other ones.
Okay. The reason why I ask is because it looks like their poles are under 50 feet.
Okay.
Okay? And there's like 10 of them along. So, that's making a, a nice statement.
Yeah.
Instead of having one gigantic one that...
Yeah.
That's the only reason I'm asking if it was annexed in, because I don't think it was, but I wasn't around when it was built.
I believe it was in the city when that...
Limits, okay.
Yeah.
But see, that's what I'm trying to explain. That's business.
Right.
All right? They stayed within the 55 feet.
Right, right.
Not, not this other person. So, I just wanted to ask that question. I don't mean to delay this.
No, that's okay. So, I think, I, I'm hearing a lot of comments or questions or, or, I'm not hearing, unlike a lot of other items before us, I'm not hearing yeses and nos. I'm hearing, I have some concerns, I have questions, and, and we want to do what's right and legal. So, correct me if I'm wrong on that. So, I think, you know, realistically, we have, we have, we have three options. We can, we can move this and, and recommend approval. We can move this and recommend denial, or we can essentially table it and, and say, look, this needs to be worked on more, because there are concerns with, with, with the language and the application and the constitutionality and the safety, security of these things that maybe in, in the, in the desire to get it on the agenda today were put forward in, into the ordinance and into the conversation. I'm just summarizing where we stand so that we can try to figure out, because we have to take some sort of action on it tonight.
Well, I'll go ahead and put a motion forward to deny this. I'd like to make a motion that we deny ordinance.
Okay. Can I stop you there? Roberts rules would allow us to make a motion and second it, and then if you want to deny it, vote no.
Okay.
But make the motion in the affirmative to approve.
Okay.
So, if you, just because you make the motion doesn't mean you support it. It just means you're putting it on the table to vote on it.
I'll pass.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I just wonder if I could offer just a few comments...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Before y'all make...
Yes.
No, no, no. I don't want to get in front of a train, although that's part of my job. Just a couple of points that have been raised that I, I may be able to offer some perspective on.
Thank you.
I, I, I don't take a position on it. I mean, personally, I think there's no such thing as too big of a flag, personally. Someone mentioned draping the moon. Why not Jupiter, you know? But looking at the law here, there was an interesting point raised, and I don't know who raised it, about what happens if on a quarter-acre residential lot, someone puts up a 300-foot pole, however big the flag is? And what I, I think from a legal perspective, what this code amendment would do, all it would do is it would exempt them from city regulation. It doesn't mean that common law principles don't apply, meaning, in the old days, what if someone did this before cities had regulations like this? Well, there was the idea of nuisance, okay? And, and trespass, and air, even air rights have existed for a long time. So, I'm not saying one way or the other what would happen in that scenario, but I, we do have legal mechanisms to address that kind of thing in the absence of regulation, for better or for worse. Another thing is, you know, sometimes there, we have a lot of examples even in Florida of rules and laws that they went away because they were unduly restrictive. So, for example, in South Florida, there was a case brought by the Institute of Justice, which is a third party, you know, not, not-for-profit litigation group, and there was a city that regulated, basically said you couldn't have front yard gardens, couldn't have them. And so, someone said, I'm going to make a case, a test case of this. They planted a front yard garden, they won the lawsuit. They said, you know, cities can get away with a lot, but they can't get away with saying you can't have a front yard garden. It's not exactly on point with your situation here, right? Because you, you've raised the point that actually, yeah, we're, we would be going back and, and changing the law, and they would... back and, and changing the law, and they would not have a co-case that would be, be able to enforce based on the pole if you recommend and the city council approved. Uh, but there's a lot of examples like that. And even Justice Scalia once said that, um, you know, if he was the king, he wouldn't allow flag burning. You know, he, I, I, he used more colorful language, I think he said something about bearded, scruffy, sandal-wearing, you know, whatever, that he wouldn't allow it, but he had to vote to allow it because of the First Amendment. We have different First Amendment issues here, and I think it's, um, I, I think it's interesting. I can't say for sure wh- where it goes. It's your call, and I think as the Chair mentioned, you know, it's up to someone to challenge. Also, your, your code enforcement, you'd be amazed at how much they do have to enforce in terms of the, the width, you know, the Florida building code, man, that thing is like, and there's no, I, I, there's no way for me to know that whole thing. Um, you have NFPA's, NEC's. Um, so, anyways, I just wanted, for better or for worse, just to share that kinda stuff, and I leave it to y'all.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, I bring it back to the Commission, is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to send a motion for approval of the height of fifty-five feet, same as the building height of a pole.
Okay, so, you wanna amend what's in front of us?
Well, technically, what I'm reading was designed or written in a hurry and they, what I'm reading, it says thirty feet, am I right, Counselor? When you're telling me it should've been written at fifty-five?
It certainly can't be thirty, it would need to be fifty-five.
It would have to be fifty-five.
But the code already says fifty-five, so...
Yeah.
All right, so, I'm recommending for approval on the appropriate height of fifty-five.
So, you're moving for approval of this ordinance as written?
Yes.
Okay. With the, with the change of thirty to fifty-five?
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
Because it's incorrect on a...
Gotcha, thank you. Is there a second?
I'm confused.
Okay, the motion is approval of this ordinance as written with the exception of changing thirty to fifty-five to match what the actual code is. This is a print error, if I'm hearing correctly, that thirty...
But does that mean if we approve it, that means anybody could put up a two-hundred-foot flag without a permit?
As long as it has the American flag on it.
So, we still have, even though we're saying that we wanna change the wording to fifty-five feet, we still have the gray area that's already built into it.
So, for general flag poles, the maximum height would be fifty-five, not thirty. For flag poles that also have the American flag, would be no fo- no height exemption. And if it's solely the American flag, would not be required to have a permit. That's what this is basically written as. And that's what Mr. Nemeek is pushing forward so that we can vote on it. So, we just need a second on that if we want to, uh, proceed to a vote.
I'll second it.
Okay.
See, it also states here, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That it also needs an engineery report.
Correct.
All right, so, it's not just you could put anything up, it needs an engineery, engineer report saying it's safe to build, and you can't go past two-hundred feet. So, that's why I'm saying just keep it at...
No, no, there's no requirement, there, this as written, there is no maximum height requirement.
I thought I read in here it said something about the federal...
There is, the FAA.
The FAA, but, but...
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
But if, but if, the FAA, our, our ordinance does not restrict the height. What it says is that it has to comply with FAA rules and regs. So, whatever those rules and regs are, if it's two-hundred, if it's fifty, if it's five-thousand, I'm obviously being exaggerated, but whatever those rules are, we're saying it just has to match those rules and regs. We're not going to say it's something equal to or less than.
But it states right here, sir, it says the ins- it's on p- it's on, it's on the second, second page on the back, okay? It states right here, installation complies with all acceptable federal, Federal Aviation Administration FAA regulations and height restrictions. So, if we're approving it, it has to meet that requirement.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
Correct.
So, you need to be under two-hundred feet or else you're out of compliance with the FAA.
You could go higher if it was lit possibly with the FAA.
Correct.
FAA could allow you to go three-hundred as long as it has three red lights on it.
It, it, it does not actually restrict the height, it just says you have to comply with FAA.
I must, must run into it, but I don't know anybody who wants to put it to...
Right.
But let's, let's be realistic, who's gonna put up a four-hundred-foot pole?
Uh, Commissioner, this is the city of the, the champions, the choice of champions. There might be a race.
Okay, so, clarification, it has been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance as written with the one change of where it mentions in one-seventeen dash one-two B-six and B-six A, thirty to fifty-five. Okay? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Any final discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Nemeek, all those opposed say nay.
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 And the Chair votes nay as well, so the motion does not carry one-six with Commissioner Nemeek as aye and the rest of the Commission as nay. Or, I'm sorry, one-five.
Mm-hmm.
Can't do my math. One-five, okay. So, that will go then to the City Council, and, um, I believe, is it on first reading or slated to be first reading?
First reading in the next...
At the next council meeting next week?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, uh, that will go on there for their agenda. All right. Are there any other items before we adjourn? I thank everyone, including staff, citizens, my fellow Commissioners, uh, for working through tonight. We had a lot of, uh, really, I think, um, fruitful and important conversations, so, thank you very much. Have a good rest tonight.
Hungry?
You're hungry? Uh, I, I got thirty-six minutes to get to...
Chicken and rice.
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 You're welcome.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Time to go to bed.
Thank you.
Have you read your book?
Thanks for being easy on me. I said, thanks for being easy on me.